Okay. I call this meeting of the Scioto Township Board of Trustees to order at 7:03. We are holding this meeting in person, but we are still operating under the Washtenaw County Emergency Order, and this extends the option for members of the Board of Trustees to participate and vote remotely. The Board has also decided to extend this option to members of the public for purposes of viewing and to make public comments. When the clerk calls the roll, those members of the Board of Trustees who are present at Township Hall need only indicate that they are present if you are participating remotely. Please state so and indicate your location by municipality. Clerk Flintoff, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Flintoff?
Here.
Corto?
Present, Ames, Story County, Iowa.
Jerome?
Here.
Noel?
Present, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel?
Here, Scioto Township.
All present.
Next is adoption of the agenda. Our agenda is to discuss the draft rules of order. These were distributed publicly last week. The Board of Trustees will be discussing these for the first time today. Although this is listed as an agenda item for possible action, and I empathize with a desire to get this done, I propose to modify this to a discussion-only agenda item. The goal today should be to explain why we support a particular option and to articulate any concerns we have about a particular rule. Listening to each other with open minds will be easier, I think, if we aren't also making final decisions. Likewise, I know that members of the public have views that they would like to share. The Board of Trustees has already received some written communications regarding the rules of order, and postponing a vote on the rules will allow more time for members of the public to communicate their views to us in writing, a format, I think, that is better suited to conveying responses to a lengthy text. To those members of the public with views on the rules of order, I encourage you to listen to the Board discussion, to offer oral comments today if you wish, but to use the next day or so to write to the Board with your specific suggestions for rules of order. Because the purpose of this meeting is Board discussion of the draft rules, and there will be no votes up or down on specific rules, the public comments period will occur after the Board discussion. This will give the public a chance to make comments that are informed by the Board discussion. So unless there are other modifications to the agenda... Clerk Flintoff?
Yeah, I would suggest, and I apologize. I thought there wasn't an agenda, so I apologize if it may have... That may have been the automated one that popped up like that, so it wasn't an action or discussion notation. So that's why I sent that out before about the agenda. I would say, though the public has seen this for a week, the Board... You know, we last talked about this, I think, was it July 10th? In our special meeting, I may have that date wrong, that Saturday. And then we quickly got to work with our attorney. The supervisor and I spent two days in a room working on a draft, imperfect as it is, please tear it up, but a draft that we've all had since the middle of July, and with some legal advice and a couple of small legal questions in it. So I would just, you know, reflect that we've had this for over two months. And I would ask, you know, put special attention to rules. Rule number two, I think, is particularly time-sensitive with our calendars being so taken up by a number of special meetings. And so I would suggest that, and with, I think, rules one, three, and four being pretty straightforward, I would suggest that we consider a discussion and possible action on rules one through four and have discussion on the rest. But we need to just start biting this off piece by piece. And so would suggest discussion and possible action on rules one through four.
So are there further comments about our proposals for the agenda? Treasurer Palmer?
I think it would be far better to do it all at once. Yes, each piece is important unto itself. But then we have a historical and audit trail instead of doing one, two, three, four, voting on those, which is what I'm understanding as the suggestion is. I think we should just go through it, get it where we want it, and then vote, one vote on the total.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, you're supporting the proposed agenda that I suggested, which is to talk it through today and then vote at another time?
That's correct. So we vote all at once on the entire set of rules presented and modified, whatever.
Trustee Noel?
Yes, I would support Jessica's suggestion. I think we have a tremendous amount of material here to cover in one night. And if we can spend the time it needs on part of it and resolve those parts, I think that would be the best approach. Otherwise, I'm just wondering, I mean, we could be here a long time tonight.
Well, that could occur either way, that's true. Okay, so we have, I guess I would interpret the clerk's suggestion as a motion and yours, your comment as support for that motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a proposed agenda from the supervisor, and we have an amendment to the agenda proposed by the clerk and supported by trustee Noel. I guess the thing to do is to vote first on the proposed amendment?
Sure.
All right, in that case, is there further comment from anyone on the proposed amendment? And as I understand it, it would be to identify rules one through four as items for possible action tonight as opposed to discussion of the...
Discussion only.
Discussion only for the entire thing. Trustee Vogel?
I guess if, I appreciate the points that are being made. Kathy's point, this is a pretty dense set of rules of order. Maybe what we do is, the sections that we can agree on, let's vote and be done. And leave only those sections that require further deliberation. Really, that was the assignment from the Board to the supervisor and the clerk. Come up with one proposal, specifically identify those areas where options need to be considered. So maybe the way forward, Supervisor Hathaway, is to agree on what we can tonight and identify the areas that remain open.
So that would be a third suggestion for how we could organize our work tonight. I think...
And I would accept that as a friendly amendment, if that would simplify the questions.
But I don't, I don't know how... Trustee Vogel, I appreciate your effort to try and find a solution, but I don't know how we would identify those areas on which we agree until we talk it through. So I'm not... So I'm not sure how that simplifies the task or changes it from what I had originally suggested.
Other than, for clarity, though, Jane, the supervisor's proposal is discussion only, so that there shall be no action. My proposal, seconded by Kathy, is discussion, possible action on rule one through four, discussion only, on five on. And if I understood your proposal, it would be discussion and possible action on all of the rules, just being mindful of, if we're not getting anywhere, to just set it aside.
Trustee Jerome?
Well, we'll take a vote on it. I guess, I consider this a body of work, and I would like to act on it as a body. To me, it's very difficult to piece it apart. It's not our standard practice, but I let the votes play as they will.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the agenda to make items one through four action items and leave the remainder...
Discussion only.
Discussion only. Are there further comments before we vote? Please call the roll.
Jerome?
No.
Noel? Noel?
Yes?
Vogel?
I'm sorry. I should have gone to the bathroom before the meeting started.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to change up the name thing. Vogel?
What are we voting on?
So we're, excuse me, we're voting on the motion from the clerk to amend the agenda to make items one through four action items and leave the remainder as discussion only. The roll is started, and Jerome has voted no, and Noel has voted yes. And I believe you were the next one.
Vogel?
I'm going to stick with discussion only. It's going to get too complicated, so I...
Hathaway?
No.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff, yes? Corto?
No.
Motion fails, two to five.
So in that case, I'd like to move that we adopt the agenda as discussion only as proposed. Is there a second support? Jerome, please call the roll.
Palmer? Yes. Flintoff? No. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
No.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion passes, five to two.
Okay. In introducing the rules of order draft for consideration, I want to say, make a few comments. Some issues have been raised regarding our meetings. For example, the changing nature of our rules for comment, for public comment, including the reduction of time for public comment from five minutes to three minutes.
I believe this gentleman may be mistaken on the format of the meeting. Are you expecting for public comment at the beginning of the meeting?
No, you don't want, if I can just say my comments, so you guys can see it?
There's a different format for me, so I just want to make sure you're aware of the way that the...
This is a special meeting.
I don't understand what you're saying, I don't understand what you're saying.
This is a special meeting called to consider this document, this draft rules of order, and public comment. Once we adopt, well, we have adopted the agenda, I'm sorry. The agenda that we have adopted includes public comment at the conclusion of the Board's discussion. So if you would like to address the Board presumably about rules of order, then you'll have a chance to do so at the conclusion of the meeting.
At the very end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting. This is a special meeting, this isn't our regular meeting.
I just didn't want you sitting there with the assumption that I was trying to save you time. I apologize.
Okay, I mean, I want to come back the next time.
Our regular meeting is, our next regular meeting is on September 28th.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
I might recommend, because I see you have it written down, if you could send that to the Board of Trustees via email, that would also be helpful prior to coming back.
Yeah, we can also take a hard copy, too, is fine.
Yeah, a hard copy, that would be helpful for us, so that we could review it prior to the next meeting, and you're welcome to come speak at it as well.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Have a great night.
I just didn't want you sitting there all night.
Yeah, I know, man, thanks a lot, appreciate you being very sensible.
Some issues have been raised regarding our meetings. For example, the changing nature of our rules for public comment, including the reduction of time for public comment from five minutes to three minutes, the omission of the Pledge of Allegiance, the imposition of limitations on categories of public comment, the delay in considering and agreeing on rules of order, et cetera. Many of these issues have their root in a conversation between the clerk and the supervisor-elect in late November 2020. In preparation for our first meeting on November 24th, the clerk provided me with a memo outlining a standard agenda and her suggested introductory comments for the supervisor. These included three-minute public comments, designated restrictions for categories of public comment, comments on each action item throughout the agenda as an experiment, and no pledge of allegiance. At that time, I relied on the clerk's familiarity with the Board of Trustees' meetings and her assurance that we would treat the changes as an experiment. In some ways, we have continued to experiment with different ways of organizing categories of public comment. In other ways, there has been a shift away from the idea that we had flexibility. The original promotion of experimentation has been dropped in favor of a rigid positional defense of a particular approach to public comment. What was a trial balloon in November 2020 is now an article of faith. However, the Board's rules are best thought of as an experiment. We will monitor the results, and if the Board determines that there is a need to modify the rules, then the Board has the authority to do so. Clerk Flintoff and trustee Noel did raise the issue of rules of order back in December and January. At that time, it seemed to me that rules of order were less pressing than some of the many things that demanded attention. For example, the Gelman cleanup, long-delayed special assessment districts, implementation of the single waste hauler ordinance, a township-owned vacant farm property on West Liberty, the budget process, pathway and parkland improvements. By the time we all turned our attention to rules of order, we were deep in conflict over competing visions for administrative structure. The conflict manifested itself in our meetings. I was ready to push forward with the Board of Trustees' deliberation on rules of order back in June, but I agreed to defer action until there was more time to talk things through, to put forward something as close to consensus as possible. When we had to find a time, then we had to find a time when everyone could be present so that nobody on the Board of Trustees was excluded based on scheduling. The draft rules of order draw on various sources, including rules of order used by Boards at other nearby townships. The draft is the result of lengthy discussions between the clerk and the supervisor. Our goal was to reach consensus on as much as possible. The majority of these rules reflect that agreement. There are nine items where we couldn't reach consensus. That are the items, these are the items on which I propose that the Board focus its attention this evening. These items are presented with options and can be grouped into categories, roughly. The first is meeting location, item, this is rules 2.3 and 2.5. Communications to the Board, rule 5.2. Public comment, this is rule eight, and it gets a little confusing, but there's two eight X Xs because of how the numbering works. And then records retention and access, this is rules 9.2, 9.3, and 9.4. I'd like to start discussion of the first group of options by saying that I don't think that there's really strong disagreement about the special meetings as described in 2.3. The only significant difference appears to be the standard of personal service of the meeting notice, and I don't even know why that's there. So we may be able to just simply agree on an option for rule 2.3 and move on quickly. Who may I call on next? Clerk Flintoff?
Thanks, Will. I'm going to keep this brief with the relevant background. Will and I worked on these a couple days in mid-July. A couple areas that we decided would be out of scope for this set of rules of order that we decided we would include in a future supplement, just so you understand why they're not there, are the rules around public hearings, rules around resolutions, ordinances, and committees. So public hearings, resolutions, and ordinances are something you typically see in rules of order, something we definitely want to get to. But we couldn't achieve that in this first pass, and we committed to looking at those for the next pass. And I think that'll be really helpful as we standardize how we push general law ordinances through, which has really been by practice and not by policy. Committees, rules for committees, that is not something this Board has ever, you know, gotten into. We could do that either via rules of order or ordinance, but again, that is, we agreed off the table for this conversation unless another member would like to bring it. But that's just what we're thinking of in terms of scoping. Further, I want to note there are several conflicts, a few, maybe three, or three, three conflicts between what is proposed in this draft from mid-July and what the Board passed on 8/17 in the supervisor's job description. And that relates to rule 2.3 and rule five. So if you want to pull that up, and that's significant because, if for no other reason, I don't want to, regardless of what policy direction the Board takes, I don't want to create kind of a legislative confusion. So our attorney has advised us our rules of order should be ultimately, if we do it in part or whole today or in a year, adopted by resolution, not by motion. I also want to note the supervisor job description was adopted by resolution. And so any resolution we would take tonight that would change those elements, I believe would supersede those. Further, we passed on June 22nd, five to one, the resolution to return to in-person meetings. That's referenced a couple times here because the policy choice between continuing the openness and access during a pandemic... By the way, there's a center article in the middle of the MTA magazine all about the practices that we're doing. So we're really ahead of the curve, which is cool. But it comes up in a few places in these rules. And so that's why it's referenced there. So I just want to share that, so that we're thinking about how these things interplay. And I would ask, Will, if we couldn't start with rule one, authority, please?
You would like to go through, in order, even the rules that we are in agreement about?
Because it's only you and me, and we're two of the seven. And this is just the first time we're all talking. We're all, you know, seven equal legislative voices, so I do want to hear.
Will?
Trustee Noel?
I definitely want to start and go sequentially. I want to start with number one. It doesn't make sense now that we're supposed to look at the whole document to skip around in the document. Let's start with number one and go through in a logical and sequential manner.
Well, trustee Noel, I appreciate that you view that as being more logical than focusing on the areas of disagreement, but I would argue that focusing on the areas of disagreement could also be viewed as being logical. Are there other comments?
I had other areas of disagreement. You didn't, you don't have all of mine here.
So there are areas of things, there are things in here that you disagree with?
Yes.
Okay, so perhaps I made an assumption since we circulated this to the Board and issues weren't raised during that phase.
Well, we asked people to raise only legal issues individually to our attorney. We had no discussion. Otherwise, we didn't have discussion together. I mean, that, we're having the first open discussion here.
Right. This is our opportunity for discussion and deliberation.
All right, then, let's go through item by item. We'll start with item one, authority. Are there comments? Trustee Noel?
Yes, so I've got a couple comments here that, it is unclear, the sentence construction isn't clear. First of all, Open Meetings Act should be, the first letters of each should be capitalized. But the sentence that reads, "In the event of a conflict between these rules and the Open Meetings Act or other statute or ordinance, the statute or ordinance shall apply." I see that sentence needs to be reworded because the Open Meetings Act should be the dominant, it's the state statute. It should, it should be the dominant, controlling situation. And it makes this, the way the sentence is worded, everything is muddled together, and it's not clear. So the ordinance shouldn't trump the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act should control, and that should dominate in a dispute over issues.
Yes. I wonder if, I think we all agree that the capitalize, if I, I want to clarify your concern, though, Kathy. I understand the, and Jim is here, he's not on camera, but he's here. So he can, you know, signal me. But, but the Open Meetings Act and other statute, I believe, control, and then ordinance, any ordinance under that, and then below that are our rules. Is that what you're saying? Or Kathy, are you saying something?
Yes, it's not clear. The sentence construction is not clear.
I agree, and I, I apologize, we didn't write that very well.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was waiting, I thought Jim was going to respond. Oh, sorry.
Only if you need me, other than, if it's not clear to trustee Noel that I think we should reword it so that it is, but what I'd say is, what it says is there's a conflict between the rules and an ordinance or statute, the statute or ordinance will apply. It does not, the sentence does not contemplate a conflict between two statutes. And I'll remind you all that this is about the Board's rules of order, not about how the Board would handle a conflict between two statutes. I don't have any problem with rewriting it, I don't, I don't have any pride of authorship. These were another entities. It started out as a framework from another entity, so I'm not concerned about any changes you want to make. It would sound like you were rejecting my work, I'm fine.
Trustee Vogel?
I, I'm glad we are finally getting going. I think we have a lot of work in front of us, and focus and efficiency is going to be important. It is really important to me to confirm who has power of the pen here. And I assume it is our township attorney, Jim Fink. I understand that this draft came from him. I assume that, that Jim will be the one who is understanding this input and revising this draft. Is that a good assumption for us all?
This draft did not come from the township attorney. The draft has been approved by the township attorney. I authored a draft, Will authored a draft, we met with the township attorney and came up with this. He provided legal input and, and I'll take it.
Who has power of the pen? Who is going to be objectively, very important word for this Board, objectively absorbing this input and modifying this draft to reflect a very essential conversation tonight so we can bring this to closure? Who is that?
It is me.
Is that agreed upon, Will? Is that agreed upon, Board?
The statute says that the clerk takes minutes. I don't know why this is any different. We need to agree on the, the, what the actual edit would be here, Jane. But the line edits, what I would do, as I do with every document, is line edit it. I saw on a FOIA release an exchange you had with Will alleging some inaccuracy about what I did on those rules, and that was not true, Jane. And I don't know what else to say about that. What I would suggest, if I could, Will, to move us forward on authority, I would suggest this, and Jim and Kathy, let me know if this meets your needs. Third-line rules and the Open Meeting Acts, capital O-M-A, Open Meeting Act, comma, strike, or other statute, comma, or ordinance, semicolon, the statute or ordinance shall apply. I'll read it one more time. Rules and the Open Meeting Act, capitalized, comma, strike, or other statute, comma, or ordinance, semicolon, the statute or ordinance shall apply.
That's, that's essentially what's here.
It's got the punctuation that's necessary.
It has, it has the punctuation to help clarify the question that you raised.
I think it does.
What if Jim Fink and I work this sentence out together and we move on?
I don't, I don't see how that's a group process.
Okay, well, okay. See, my concern was that the phrase "other statute or ordinance" was put on equal footing with the Open Meetings Act.
So that's a different concern.
Yeah, well, that was the concern I was trying to express. That the Open Meetings Act should control if there's a conflict, not our ordinances. That's what I said. So, I mean, I'm willing to work this out with Jim and we can, I think we can work it out.
I'm sorry, I was staring at the text and trying to figure out solutions.
I, I, I think we should have a, this is discussion only. So I didn't think we were going to be wordsmithing every solitary rule as we went through this because obviously we would need, and I would assume we would provide Jim the opportunity to review this and make sure that he's compliant with everything that he is. So I do think that there might be merit in taking some of these, this clarification and giving Jim the leeway to, to make that modification. And maybe it's a discussion between yourself and Will and Mr. Fink, following the meeting to come back with the revised language. I guess I'm a little concerned only in that if we start doing commas and semi colons, which are, I appreciate all that and they're necessary, I think Kathy made a good point, that we're going to get mired down in the minutia of this where we really, which is important, mind you. But we still need to talk about some of the, we have a lot of stuff to cover here. And I think we need to focus on the whole of this article rather than on a particular comma. Although if there's something, obviously, that there's a couple errors here that I'll point out. But those are easily fixed. This is just a comment on my part.
Well, I think that's a very good point, thank you. I, I think if we were to start trying to edit this, then in fact, we would be making decisions as opposed to raising concerns, et cetera. So why don't we treat this as a concern that's been raised by Trustee Noel? And while we've thrown out a couple of ideas for how to address that concern, instead, perhaps the best way to deal with it is to note the concern and see if there are any other concerns about this particular rule.
If I could add something to the process, I think could help us. This is our first draft. I will put the notes, and I will also do some black line, knowing that this is coming back as a second draft to the board. If that's, everybody's amenable to that?
We're all going to see this again.
Yeah.
We're all going to be able to make.
So you can see the changes, perfect.
An assumption of whether or not we feel that the amendments that have been provided by everyone and suggestions by Jim are amenable to Kathy and the rest of the board with respect to question of my authority.
Okay. Are there any other comments on Rule one, authority? Seeing none, let's move on to two meetings. First rule is two point one, regular schedule. Are there any comments?
I would just reflect the additional thing I made and apologize for so many colors. I tried to allow this, the schedule that we adopted last week conforms with two point one, our regular schedule. And I tried to annotate it so that people could see how the rest of the rules would fill in. But I'm, I'm good with two point one as presented.
Are there any other comments?
States in writing what we've always been doing for a long, long time.
Okay. Rule two point two, working session. Yes?
I just had a suggestion. I mean, this is a new model for us. I like it because it's aspirational to really get down to one business meeting and then one short half hour meeting plus a working session each month. I would suggest an additional sentence to make it conform more clearly with the special meetings. That last sentence on two point two, I would suggest adding, written requests shall include the purpose of such meeting as well as the certain date and place of the working session. So the written request shall include the purpose of such meeting as well as certain date and place of the working session. So that we don't have a written request without a clear topic.
Yes, Treasurer Palmer.
I can see where your thought is relating this to a special meeting. But the working sessions we used to have, we had a working session and then we had the regular township meeting. That working session, we had the items and we went over those. We could ask for further information, et cetera. But it wasn't one topic, it could be many. And then the final decisions and vote were done at the regular township meeting. Over time, because of the, you know, that demand in the township, it morphed into two regular meetings. I don't think we need a special request for a working session. We need to decide whether we want to do that structure again and then go from there. Special meetings already are special requests.
So that's a good point, Donna. That would be different than what's stated in Rule two point two. This is a may, that we may replace our fourth Tuesday regular meeting with a working session. And if I'm understanding you, you're proposing instead that we just decide if we want to have regular working sessions in calendar than as such.
I was giving just an example of how we made it work before. I mean, I think working sessions are important. I think it would help eliminate these long hours we've been, all of us have been a part of. And the work needs to be done, so, but maybe, I think we need to treat this section as, do we want a working session or don't we? Otherwise, special meetings take care of special requests.
True.
So you're suggesting not including the additional sentence?
The whole section.
Or the whole section?
Or, or.
I don't know, that's what we want to talk about tonight. Do we want to try doing a working session again? Is this, or is this document leaving the option there that these, a working session can make part of the structure?
I think that's what goes implying with the may, that the option is there available for VOT to come into a working session, but it's not required.
So that it would be a goal, Donna, really for us as we become more efficient, to have the fourth Tuesday of the month, a regular meeting, but, but we, we would aim to have that instead be a working session. So that from seven o'clock to seven thirty, we would have a regular meeting to just do what we have to do, which is, you know, minutes and payment of the bills. And then at seven thirty, you'll see farther down on the time, the working sessions would start at seven thirty and really be structured to be as open as you're talking about, Donna. And I agree with you on the value of those kind of meetings.
If we could do it that way, it certainly is worth a try. Because I also am thinking this document, when we decide on the wording and we vote, it certainly is going to be able to be modified. It should be, so, okay.
Well, it has to be because of the public hearing resolutions, that's all going to be part of a rules order by a subsequent session.
Right, right, okay.
It's still a living township.
It's a first draft.
We just got to find one.
Okay, I'm. So, so with that then, I guess, Donna, understanding the openness that we want to achieve in a working session, you know, my thought about a written request shall include the purpose of such meeting. You know, if it's going to be on the fourth Tuesday, I wouldn't see that as important. We know when it is, we're up for anything on those days, right? But if it's extra time that's being requested of us, I, I would ask that we have the purpose. All of that said, if we can just understand that that's the goal. If there's extra time in addition to the second and fourth Tuesdays to have a purpose, I'd be fine going forward without that additional sentence. I think it strengthens it, but I don't, you know, I don't think it's critical.
Are there further comments on two point two? Trustee Noel.
I'm just thinking, based on what Donna said, it sounds like this is an issue we should discuss. Do we want to have a working session? I mean, we haven't, we've never discussed that. This was the first I had heard about it when I saw it in the rules.
Yeah, it's an idea we're throwing out.
Trustee Vogel. Oh, you're muted.
No, let me, sorry, Jane, I think you're listed as iPhone, is that you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes.
Kathy, I think we really need to keep our focus on rules of order as so much has just said. The rule of order says may. We can take this on another day, but there's so much in front of us. And at some point, at ten or eleven or twelve tonight, we're going to have to declare uncle. But we got to keep moving.
That's fine.
Did you say we're going to have to declare uncle?
Isn't that what you do when you give up?
Okay, I don't, I don't.
It's a spoiler alert for her future edit of the rule document.
Two, two point three, this is the first of the rules for which there are options presented. So there's two options here, option A and option B. And I sense that maybe my reading of them is, is not, there's, there's more of a difference to these than, than I detected when I was looking at them recently. I'd just forgotten what it is. So perhaps, yeah, you want to hear me what it is.
The difference between option A and option B, besides the twenty-four hours and eighteen hours and the antiquated, you know, me knocking on your door, which I would prefer not to do with all due respect. Option B, I, I'm recommending that the township board shall meet in special session at the call of the clerk upon the written request of the supervisor or three members of the township board. Currently, under state law, it's four members, typically it's three members, so this would be a change. And it would be a written request. And this is a critical step, I think we're missing, that, that appears here in option B. Written requests for a special meeting shall include the purpose of such meeting as well as the certain or possible date and place of special meeting. It's important to have this line in our rules of order because the O M A is not sufficient in this regard. The O M A does state that the notice of such a special meeting shall include the purpose, but there is no requirement that the request be written, that the request have a purpose. And I would ask that the requests be written, that they have a purpose as well as the date and place further. With the at least eighteen hours, the O M A in Michigan, I think, is way behind the times. It requires only eighteen hours notice, has nothing to do with an agenda or material. So say, for example, we called a special meeting for a Saturday at nine AM. You know, we want to have a, a working session of some sort. Eighteen hours notice would mean that a notice would be posted on our website by Friday at three PM. That is not enough notice for the public, and that is not enough notice for we, for us as members. So I would suggest option B with the edit of saying seventy-two hours minimum for a notice. Seventy-two hours minimum. In two point four, we always have an emergency meeting notice exception. If there's a real emergency, we're going to do the best we can. But short of a real emergency, and we've had a lot of special meetings that have been called, maybe we've had a doodle poll, maybe we've had emails from the supervisor or Christie to hold dates, the public has no idea, and frankly, I as a parent, you know, we all have busy lives. We want to know why we're setting aside extra time when we already have twenty-four meeting dates a year to use. So that's really the main difference, Will, is that there's the requirement of a written request that it should, whether it be from three members of the board or from the supervisor, that that written request includes a purpose as well as the certain or possible date of the meeting.
Okay. I'm looking at these two texts for these two options, option A and option B. And you just presented an argument saying that one of them is different from the other because, and then you read off text that is repeated in both of them, so I don't get it, but.
The twenty-four hours.
Well, the big, the big difference between these, as they are written in the draft, not as you just amended it, is there's twenty-four hours in one, and it says this thing about notice shall be served personally, which does seem quite antiquated, like you're riding around on a horse delivering it to people's houses. But, I mean, I guess there's parts of the township where that's possible. But the, the, you know, other than that, they both are written requests. They both offer the option from, of having a written request from the supervisor or three members of the township board. They both say the notice shall contain the time, place, and purpose of the meeting.
The difference is option B start on line three. Written requests for a special meeting shall include. So there are two steps to this process. There's the request and there's the notice. The notice is public, the request is either a motion by the board, a written memo from three members, or a written, you know, memo email from the supervisor or three members.
So you want, you want, you want to make, the, the big difference is that the purpose is stated in the written request as well as in the notice.
It's required by law in the notice. Additionally, it would be in the written request, as well would be the date, if certain, or the possible dates, if unknown.
Okay. All right. And you, and you're suggesting that we need seventy-two hours notice, that we're not giving enough notice evidently as it is? Or you're guarding against that sort of short notice?
No, I, I've been uncomfortable with the amount of notice we've given for some of our special meetings, and I think we could do better. And I think seventy-two hours would not be a burden on any of us if we were just to commit to it.
Okay.
And the eighteen hours is, that is written somewhere, we've just always followed up.
And that's the statutory minimum, yeah.
And I did see some special meetings were called on pretty short notice last year. I don't think we've ever done them quite that short notice since.
Certainly, we're just always trying to do better.
Great, okay. Any other comments on these options, option A or option B?
I would just ask a question of our attorney, and you don't have to answer it now, but to flag it, Jim. A potential conflict with the eight seventeen resolution to adopt the township supervisor job description. It says set a date and time for special meetings.
So, yeah.
Set a date and time for special meetings. And what this says is what's in the statute and we're operationalizing is that, you know, for example, the board could by motion or by written request of three members, call a special meeting and set that date. It wouldn't always defer to the supervisor to schedule for us. So I would just want to make sure that there's no conflict there eventually when we adopt these, Jim. It looks like there would be a conflict.
Have you, have you made a note of that, Jim?
Got it.
Okay. Rule two point four, emergency meeting notice exception. Rule 2.4, emergency meeting notice exception. Are there any comments on this rule? Now, 2.5, place of meeting. And here, again, we have options, option A and option B. Are there comments?
Does everybody see that this opens up the big question of remote participation for the public? This is the first place where that happens. Big policy choice here. I recommend option A. It is, remains consistent with our June 22nd resolution passed on this subject just a few months ago. It's attached and it affirms our commitment to accessibility. The OMA doesn't have particular requirements for accessible place. I also added the language around generally appropriate for public access. I, I think that's, that's always important, but that the meeting locations, we affirmatively say they're physically accessible, allow for remote participation, and be generally appropriate for public access.
Are there other comments? Trustee Noel. You're muted.
Sorry. I would also support option A. I mean, it's consistent with their prior resolution, and I think it's important to keep the remote public participation options in place as they are.
Okay. Moving along, item, or, uh, rule 2.6.
If I, well, out, out-
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, and I just want to make sure I'm clear. I'm understanding this to be, this is not in relation to the Emergency Act that's been placed by the Washoumaw County Board of Commissioners. This would be-
The emergency, the, if you look at our resolution, the Emergency Act that's in place by the county, all that does is allows us, we, we, members of the body, to join remotely for any reason through December 31st. We already, under the OMA, can join for any reason for a medical issue, which I think a lot of people would claim. Our resolution establishes that we, the members, can continue to join remotely consistent with the OMA, because we know that's going to change after December 31st, right? Like, I doubt the legislature is gonna come back and say, y'all have to go back to the old-fashioned way of meeting in person, but we're not going to know what those legislative changes are till we get closer to January 1st, Alex. And so that's why I think it's really important to write the rules so that they're not dependent on the changing laws. And our resolution from June 22nd very clearly states that we respect the autonomy of, of residents to choose how they want to participate. So, so option A would basically not undo or conflict with any part of the June 22nd resolution.
Trustee Vogel.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So, again, for the sake of making progress, I think an important thing to do right now is to hear from each of us. So we get a sense of, are we leaning toward one option versus the other? Are we towards closure on this, or is it a topic for further discussion? So, Will, I think it is important to go around the board and hear from all seven of us, specifically on the, these issues that have, as areas that need agreement.
Okay.
We need, the value of tonight is to assess how close we are to agreement, right?
So, so what would you like to say about this, these options in this, on this rule?
I, the township has made the investment in this hybrid capability. It would be inconsistent to somehow put it in a closet now. So I am supportive of remote participation. To me, there are two issues, and I will just name them. Are we going to decide to enable the public to participate remotely? I'd say yes. The second question will be, are we going to enable the public to make public comment remotely? And that is a separate question dealt with later in these rules of order. But yes, I would very much support remote participation, being able to view, see the, the, the BOT and participate separate from a decision we've got to make a little bit later on public comment. So I would be supportive. I suppose this is option A if that's what it is.
So, so I guess the question, as I understand it, or your statement is that you're interpreting the words remote participation as possibly meaning viewing remotely?
It should, it should simply be remote attendance. This, I think, is dealing with attendance.
I disagree. As I, I would say, allow for remote participation. Now, this is just about, I hear your earlier point, Jane, and I agree with that about how this option A is really about, are we going to choose meeting locations that are physically accessible and allow for, you know, connectivity, have Wi-Fi, have a, a camera, have a mic, have something. And so I think remote participation, what that connotes is two-way participation. Whether it's video and/or audio is just, I think, a procedural question, depending on the space we're in. If we're in the middle of a barn, you know, I, I don't know. So, so remote participation, Jane, is the term we in other jurisdictions have been using to kind of be a catch-all, so I think it, it could be any of those. It could be limited, I-
Jessica, I do appreciate your perspective, but I notice our pattern of conversation is you are speaking up after anybody speaks. And there are seven voices. We got to get into this.
Are there other comments on these options? Trustee Corto.
I agree that we have made the investment in making this meetings accessible in this way. I, I personally am, find hybrid meetings a struggle. I find it difficult to hear, to pay attention to people on the screen, as well as in, in the room. That shift in attention, for me, complicates my own ability to fully attend to issues. But this is a group decision, and if the group as a whole feels this is a better way forward, I, of course, will abide by that.
Trustee Jerome, did you have more to say?
I, I would say that this is, with regards to a, a virtual viewing and/or a, I think the discussion about remote participation, there's lots of ways to view participation. And we'll, we'll get to that, obviously, when we get a little bit deeper into it, because you can participate by viewing and hearing and all these different things, but I think for, for this specific rule, to me, I agree that we, that we need to be able to provide a place that people can come, but we need to be able to provide the opportunity for the public to be able to watch and review the going down of the BOT. That's why we installed the equipment. So I, I, I do see some definition that will need to add for remote participation, but in this instance, I, the way that I'm interpreting it is, is that people can either check in via computer or check in via being here.
Okay.
I, I agree with what Alex has just said. It does provide, we've had some of the public say how difficult some of them would have. They wouldn't be able to attend, but they can now, so. We're meeting a need, and I think, yes, we want to continue doing that. If there's a wording issue, we'll deal with that. Restructure a sentence or whatever.
Well, I, 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 I hear what people are saying. I just want to point out that later on, on, I think, page 12 of the draft rules, there's something that may help to clarify this in terms of internet presence and hybrid participation. And so there, there are some rules that get more specific on the question of participation, and there are certainly a, a lot of text in here about public comment, which I think is where the difference between attending and actively participating, engaging with the meeting may be clarified. Given what you said, Trustee Vogel, are there further comments about the option 2.3 that anybody would like to make that weren't made earlier?
I just had a general clarification-
You were on 2.5. I, I was trying to make the point, pick up on the point. I was trying to pick up on, I'm sorry, I was trying to pick up on Trustee Vogel's point, which was, make sure and go around whenever there's an area of disagreement and give everyone an opportunity to comment. And not everyone commented on item 2.3. So before we move on, I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to make their position known when there are choices. Did anyone make, want to make further comments on either item 2.3 or 2.5 before we move on?
Okay, I just want a clarification. Are we saying that we are all in agreement on option A for 2.5?
Sounds like there's questions about those words, Kathy, remote participation.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't want to cut you off.
Okay. But I'm just saying, we, with the exception of the definition of remote participation, are we in agreement on option A?
I, I don't think we're trying to take votes this evening. We're, we're sort of trying to sort of give everyone an opportunity to voice concerns or support for different things. I'm, you know, we're not, we're not making decisions this evening. We're having discussion.
Okay, I know. I know that. I thought part of it was to try to find out where we have consensus. But that's okay. We can just leave it open.
Trustee Vogel. You had your hand raised.
I know I did. I think the main difference between A and B is this remote participation. I, and then again, we're not making decisions, but what I'm hearing, and, and I think it's kind of what I said initially, we may be well-served by, by treating option A as remote attendance. Someone can be present remotely at the BOT meeting, and on page 12, if and when we ever get to it, deal with the issue of public comment. So I think, I think the way to sort of find a way forward here, again, not voting, but just simply swap out the word participation with the word attendance.
And there are other differences between the two, so make sure you, you note those.
Let's move on to rule 2.6, time of meeting. Are there comments on this rule?
Will, why don't you just go around the seven of us and just call on folks so we can efficiently just provide input and kind of move this along?
Well, if there's no, there's no comment, if no one has any input, then we can move on even faster. Now, Trustee Vogel.
So I went back through, I think Pittfield is a very solid model for us. They actually say at 11:00, we hit to 10:00. Maybe we split the difference, but I will be a strong advocate for, we've got to set some kind of end, end time. Out of respect for, yes, our residents, but also the board members who have full commitment the following day.
Yes.
The supplemental agenda, I tried to describe kind of how this would work for folks in the hypothetical undertaking business. And so I, I want to say, you know, I, I, I came around to this idea, not for myself, because I, I do feel like if we have an agenda, we, there is no end time to a public meeting. It's one of the principles of public meetings. And, and we should get through our entire agenda, and that is our job. That said, I do think it is, it is disrespectful of the public when we go on way, way too late. So I am comfortable with this one. I would say there's a, a measure at the end of rule 2.6 that requires that any matters that have been on the agenda that we don't act on are banned at the top of the next regular meeting agenda. And that's to prevent, discourage any potential abuse where we might repeatedly put off dealing with a particular item, to prevent us from doing that.
Trustee Corto.
I appreciate that we do need to get through the business, and I also think we, we have a duty to do so in a thoughtful, deliberative way. And, and I would just question how focused and thoughtful and deliberative anybody can be after more than four hours of a meeting nonstop. There's lots of evidence to suggest, for instance, that the quality of judges' decisions goes down the later in the day it gets. So I, I think the idea of an end time, I, I feel like 10:00 o'clock might be a little bit early, but 11:00 at the latest for new items with the placement on the following, at the top of the following agenda, would be a measure that would allow us to really consider our business thoughtfully and give the public an opportunity to have a bedtime as well.
Are there other trustees who would like to comment? Trustee Noel.
I hear the comments about needing to stop the meetings when it's getting late. But there are going to be times when there will be matters before us that cannot be resolved in a neat time period. And I would say we should work harder on our agendas, our comments during meetings. And there are other ways to make our meetings more efficient than arbitrarily cutting them off at 10:00 p.m. or 11:00 p.m. I think it's inappropriate to just say we're going to cut the meeting off at a certain time. I, I don't think it's appropriate.
So you're not in favor of any cutoff time at all?
Well, I agree that beyond 11:00, it's getting tough. I agree. But there are other ways we can use to make sure that that doesn't happen. I mean, and many times, I feel like we're not doing that. So I would say it becomes the responsibility of each board member to do their part to keep their comments concise and not belabor certain points. And I think we could do that. Somehow, other boards have succeeded in doing that.
Oh, sorry. I agree that we can be more concise for our comments and just picture the time. Perhaps it could be just as easy as something that we're doing for the special meeting. If there was a motion by three or more members of the trustees to continue a particular subject matter that was on the agenda beyond the 11:00 o'clock, it would take a motion to approve the continuance for that one particular item that we're working on, so that there's not, I don't want to be midstream and cut something off, and then that would be, that would allow us to continue past 11:00 o'clock for a particular items, or any up, or discussion, or for action, and then the rest would be deferred.
That's how it's written.
And that's not the-
It's, 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 it's basically if, if something's in progress, when you reach whatever the hour is that is, is the sort of trigger point, tipping point, then you would finish that item- then you would finish that item. And then you would, presumably you would move to table the rest of the agenda items other than public comment and fill the next meeting. And that way you would make sure that you were including time for public comment at the end of the meeting.
Maybe I didn't clear, I was suggesting that you could have that motion to, to any or and or all of whatever. If people were in consensus that there were matters on the agenda that were beyond the topic that you were speaking of specifically, that if there were, is a motion to continue, that that would be approved and you could tackle another subject. If we felt that there was business that was important enough that it couldn't be delayed to another meeting and so we saw.
So there would be a board decision at that point to continue with items that weren't already in progress.
And I understood your question, Alec. I, I think it's a good policy discussion for us to have. I would, I would object to our changing the agenda when we're tired. And I'm just thinking about playing this out, right? I think it's important that if we have this provision that we're not allowed to manipulate the order at that point in time. And I say that just to put in a measure of protection so that we're not, okay, it gets to a certain time and then four votes says, okay, we're going to pull up this one of three remaining items. Four votes says we're going to pull up this one of, and that could go on and on. So I think it would be really important if we do have such a provision that we must follow the adopted agenda order and that the items then go at the top of the next meeting so that they're right in front of our face. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I mean, I wasn't, you're correct. I wouldn't suggest that we then have seven items left and we take the seventh and loop it up.
But it's a potential.
Yeah, I agree.
And we could maybe address this issue right in the beginning. We, when we're looking at the items and we're getting the agenda ready, the ones we know are critical, maybe due to time or schedules or whatever, put them at the top.
Yeah, that's to Kathy's point. That's, that's, you know, controlling the agenda and structuring it.
Yeah, and at the adoption of the agenda.
Yeah.
Are there other comments? Right, moving on, item, or rule 2.7, change in schedule.
That's sort of what we've been doing. It's worked.
And to clarify, that's the regular schedule. And so that is just this that we adopted a week ago, the schedule of regular meetings.
Oh, Trustee Cartel.
Can I just ask a question for historical perspective for those of you who've been on previous boards? How often during a given year has it happened that a quorum has not been achieved? I mean, is this an issue that comes up often that we would have to decide? And when that has happened, has there typically been an alternate meeting date set? Or do you just skip that meeting and resume at the next regular meeting?
In my time, Jackie, never has it happened, never. The board people have taken their position, their board position seriously, and we've never, ever not had a quorum. It's a good record.
That covers a few years.
Didn't have to throw.
I just said.
But it speaks, it speaks highly of the citizens and township of that participating.
Nicely said, Donna.
So, two points, so that covers, I think, actually 2.8 as well, unless there's comments about 2.8.
I would just ask, Will, has this been people's practice to let you know if they're not coming?
I usually had word if someone is not going to be in town. Often it's because we're gathering, we're trying to, you know, gather information about scheduling and so people will volunteer that information. Yeah, if I had enough people telling me that they were not going to be present, I would, the alarm would go off and say, wait, we're getting close to not having quorum. Trustee Cartel.
I did just have a question about, you know, if one is ill or becomes ill suddenly, you can't necessarily provide 24-hour advance notice. So I, I mean, I understand 24-hour notice of the full, I mean, like if the meeting has to be canceled, I get that. But are you saying that every board member has to supply 24-hour notice of not being present? Because a sudden illness is not, how do you address that?
It should be, I think you're right. That sentence should, should be sort of more aspirational than.
If possible.
Yeah, sort of, if possible, give at least 24 hours advance notice.
Or as soon as absence is known, as soon as planned absence is clear, something like that.
Yeah, I think this is, I think this is when written for planned absences as opposed to, you know, unplanned, you know, medical situations or whatever.
You guys have the gist of it. You guys can go wordsmith this offline, right?
Right.
You've got the gist.
No, I think that's a good point. I'll make a note. All right, rule three, public notice of meetings.
Supervisor Hathaway, I wonder if I could make a motion for just a five-minute recess? Just five minutes for a quick break?
Sure, let's, let's do that. Let's take a break for five, no motion necessary.
Okay.
We'll take, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Okay, so the audio is on and
Recording in progress.
Has resumed.
Okay, we're back, and I think we left off on rule number three, which is public notice of meetings. Go for it.
Um, just background on three. First, the statute, the clerk is responsible for providing notice for special meetings. That is the extent of the statutory duty of the clerk?
All meetings.
Correct. So what I'm clarifying is that the statute states that the clerk shall provide notice for special meetings, period. This would delegate the responsibility for providing proper notice for all the meetings. I'm happy to do this, but just want to, and I'm supportive of 3.1, 3.2, 3.1 and 3.2, follow the statute mostly, and support.
Are there other comments regarding public notice of meetings? Items, I guess we can just talk about all of them together, 3, 3.1 and 3.2.
It's pretty much standard protocol.
Yeah, I'm surprised that it isn't, you know, in the statute.
No, it was always the township manager, the previous clerks, it was never their responsibility.
But I think it was, in a sense, delegated to that person, you know. It was, yeah. Which, again, a responsibility of an officer or trustee in some fashion is to make sure it gets done. If they don't do it or can't do it, they can delegate.
Certainly, but, but to be clear, Donna, the, the statutory responsibilities with the board, I'm just sharing this as background information, the statutory responsibilities with the board, delegating to the clerk or her designee, and Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong with this, wrong on this former clerk, but regular meetings, agendas and materials were never in the statute as the responsibility of the clerk, as far as I could see. Correct?
You're muted.
You're correct.
Are there other comments from members of the board? Jane, you keep tricking me by raising your hand and then not raising your hand.
Me?
Yeah, I thought you were raising your hand.
No, not at all. No, I'm just looking here.
Okay. So we move on then to item four, which is quorum attendance call of the township board. 4.1 is quorum. Are there any comments?
Does everybody understand what a call of the board is?
That was my question, actually, just again, what are examples of times or instances when that's been used?
Let me take the role. No, this, and I would guess, Donna, has probably never been used in our discussions, but it's recommended, Jackie, and ordering the call of the board is, say, for example, there's a meeting, and we've been called to the special meeting, and let's say that four of us don't show up, and there's three of us sitting here at seven o'clock, 7:10. We may order a call of the board, meaning we get on the phone and say, get over here, there's a meeting. So some other entities have more power to actually compel you, perhaps with somebody in a uniform, to get yourself to that meeting.
A ride, too.
And perhaps a ride. But this is just order a call of the board. So Jackie, this would probably never, ever happen, but you can imagine a scenario where, where it might, you know. I don't know in Scioto Township, but think about it. Well, no, I mean, think about recent examples, the U.S. Capitol, Texas Legislature, right? It's a protest, it's a, it's a, it's a skillful protest to not allow a quorum to show up to conduct the business of a properly posted meeting. So this rule would say, we can order a call. Now, what are the legal consequences if you don't, none, but it just states our intent that we expect each other to show up for every single meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's just, I laugh because it's, it's clearly a sort of a term, a call of the board, but in our, in your example, it was literally a call of the board, and that's probably how it would play out, is, you know, if we didn't have quorum, we'd be on the phone trying to figure out where people were who weren't present.
We can't not have the meeting, it's basically the idea. Can we postpone?
So, I think we've covered items 4.1 and 4.2. Item five is agenda preparation and distribution. This is, the supervisor shall prepare the agenda of business for all township board meetings, that's rule five, and then, is there any comment on that? Trustee Noel?
Yeah, I think it should be the supervisor and clerk, because traditionally it has been, I know when I was clerk, I was always involved in providing input into the agenda. I think that this situation needs checks and balances, and even though it might be difficult sometimes, I think that the residents are better served if both Will and Jessica participate in setting the agenda.
Sure, I think I saw Jane's hand up first, though. Jane, were you trying to comment or no?
I do have a comment, and I'll say it really briefly, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. So, I was thinking along the same lines, just reflecting back on some input and conversation over recent months, I think this ought to say something like, the supervisor with input from any and all board members, right? This is a collaborative process, we all have a voice in this, in this agenda. So I would really do it in terms of input from any and all board members.
Good.
Okay, I just want to point out that in the next item, the next rule, there's clarification about how that input, that process would work. I don't think, you know, you need to read item five in isolation from, say, 5.1, the next rule. In fact, it makes more sense if you read them together, but Clerk Flinton?
Sure, I was gonna say something similar, Will. I would suggest, you know, 5, 5.1 through 5.12, I think of as steps. I do think five, you know, maybe a better title for it is simply agenda preparation and distribution, period, or what trustee Vogel said, I think is good, because I think if you read point one through point 12, that's really more of what it says, Jane, is the collaborative process. I do want to flag two questions for our attorney, which will need an answer to prior to taking action. The August 17th resolution passed by the board to adopt the township supervisor job description and to affirm the responsibility and authorities assigned in the job description. Page two of the job description, there's two paragraphs which directly conflict with section five, which we wrote in mid-July, and then we passed this resolution in mid-August. So let's not make this more confusing than it has to be. The two paragraphs are, one, meeting agenda, and two, legislation. So just flag those for legal questions to see if and how they conflict or not if we were to pass rules by resolution.
Okay, item five, or item, rule 5.1, all meetings procedure for submission, this is where the details are about the collaborative process for input into the agenda. Are there any comments on that? Seems, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just suggest, sorry?
Jacqueline had her hand up, and I was deferring to her before I went.
Oh, I was calling on Clerk Flinton.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that. Very hard to hear this.
The suggestion I have under bullet point three, under 5.1, the purpose of that list is to list the management staff, the people who have areas of responsibility, regularly need to bring things to the board. I would add to that the project manager, administrator, to those lists, to that list there, just to be complete, administrator or project manager. And I will say, you know, something we've done nicely, continuing from prior boards, and we've continued this, though structured it differently, is it's so important to state clearly if an item is for discussion only or for possible action, and we've continued to do that. I've also included here a meaningful agenda description, and that's open to interpretation, but we have had conflict and disagreement around what's a meaningful agenda description. So, but, but this is really to encourage anybody to send items at any time to the supervisor and clerk, and with the form requested, we haven't really talked about this, Will, I mean, obviously we want it to be as simple as possible, but also to, like, an email, but also just to make sure it has been, say, reviewed by the attorney or whatever steps need to happen.
So trustee Corteau and then trustee Vogel.
So that actually covers part of my point, was that, you know, we need to leave the gate open for the project manager and the attorney. I would just say that I agree that we need a basic description of the issue. I would say it should be clear and concise and focused on the key decision points. Well, the background is vital, and sometimes our packets get very long, so having a very clear, concise, focused description with the key areas for decision would be very helpful. So I would just say, let's be careful about the meaningful description, we need to be really clear what that means.
And to clarify, I should have said agenda item description, the actual items.
Oh, I see, I see, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
Trustee Vogel.
I actually have two fairly significant suggestions about 5.1. We are, this board is getting very close to beginning to interview candidates for a township manager, and Diane Benson, who's been very pivotal in that, I think summarized that position very well when she described it as chief, chief of staff. This is the person much of the staff will be reporting to. So I'm gonna make two suggestions. In 5.1, in the second line, when it says, such items sent to the supervisor and the clerk, I am going to suggest what we put there is such items sent to the township leadership team inclusive of supervisor, clerk, treasurer and township administrator. We are finally close to rebuilding the management team of this township, and I would really encourage us to leverage the strength of that leadership team. So I would again make the suggestion, send items to the leadership team, which basically is the three officers plus the township manager. Then, item, the third bullet point, I just want to confirm, we're all holding the same assumptions about this township administrator, he's not on par with, he or she is not on par with all these staff leaders. He is, he or she is the chief of staff. And that fourth, third bullet in my mind needs to say, in coordination with, it's the township administrator who would be bringing forth an agenda item and bringing a staff lead to speak to it. The board's not gonna interface with 15 or 12 or whatever the number is. We're gonna have a chief of staff, a township administrator, a fourth person in the township leadership team. That is, that is an element I hope we can reflect in these rules of order.
I do not share that assumption.
You don't?
I, I don't.
I, I, that's, it is pivotal, it is beyond tonight's discussion, but it is pivotal. So I do think we decided that we're hiring a township manager consistent with that governance model. We're not hiring another staff person.
Township administrator?
It's got an important legal difference, Jane, township manager has a particular legal meaning under MCL 41. Sorry, I'm not trying to just, no, I'm not trying to eke out on you, what I'm trying to say is-
But I hope we didn't get fooled by getting popped into township administrator as a title, and it means something to township manager. I assume we are hiring a chief of staff, and that person would be a critical part of our leadership team, which is why I made the two proposals I did.
Okay. Are there other comments on item, rule 5.1? Trustee Jerome?
The only thing I would say, and obviously there's a larger discussion to be had there about the township administrator, let's just say, I would say the third bullet point should be in coordination with the township administrator, but I do want to hear respectively from chiefhood or from our township attorney, so I don't want to preclude them from presenting or doing it to the township, but I do think it needs to be in coordination with the township administrator, the only clarification I would make of that.
And it is maybe a better discussion for tomorrow night, but, but it, it does not align with our, our job descriptions or discussions about the township administrator role. So we should address that tomorrow, Jane.
What doesn't align?
Jessica, please, what doesn't align? Here's the basic assumption, and you gotta, you gotta declare yourself. We elected, we voted on a model that sets up a four-person leadership team. We didn't call it a township manager to try to get beyond the conflict, we called it a township administrator. Chief of staff, senior position, part of a leadership team. It's not, it's nothing different than that.
I think it's a discussion for another day. We, we called it a township administrator, director of operations, certainly all the staff will be reporting to that person, but I think it's a discussion for another day, I don't want to take a soft task, Will.
Okay, so I think we've surfaced an issue that is an important thing for the board to discuss, but I agree that it's not essential that we, we somehow clarify where we stand on it, or even what it is that we're disagreeing about right now. Are there other comments on rule 5.1? Seeing none, so the next item is one where there are options, this is rule 5.2, and this deals with correspondence, reports and presentation, and so there are two options, option A and option B, and sort of different approaches envisioned in each of these, this is where there's actually a pretty significant difference. Whom would like to comment?
Well, it would be helpful, I'm sorry to jump in, it would be helpful if each of you could characterize what's an option A, what's an option B, so we understand what you're, what you're going for. Go ahead, Will.
Well, okay, option A, in option A, the clerk is responsible for assembling written communications to the board, and this is an item that we have had some disagreement about in the past, whether to include with those written communications the response, if there is a response, from the township to the person who wrote the communication to the board. And this rule, option A, if, if option A were selected, would include the response. So that's one key distinction between these. There are some other distinctions.
Speak to those, please.
Well, okay.
Well, I'm sorry, it's important.
Okay, I just feel it's like, sort of like call and response. It's the responsibility of the respondent to transmit their correspondence to the clerk, so there's some burden on the person who has written the response to, to sort of raise it up and say, I want to make sure this is included along with the communications to the board. There's also in here a requirement that reports from members of the board be delivered in writing. So this is a new, this is another place where we're sort of raising the bar for ourselves, because the tradition, the norm in the past has been, which we've been following, is to give oral reports in, in the, you know, the real, in real time during the meeting, and I think, you know, some of us, some of the trustees, I should say, have taken a step towards trying to get their reports in writing, but we still aren't at a point where we're, we're getting those reports early enough to include them in the meeting packet. So this, this rule would sort of, you know, place a bigger burden on us. It also would clarify that presentations to the board should be, you know, delivered as, in a timely fashion to be included in the meeting packet. And do you want to talk about option B?
Sure, thanks. Regarding written reports from committees, presentations to the board, I, I just recommend that they be submitted as we have outlined in rule 5.1. It's, it's odd to me and confusing to have two different processes, it's all kind of submitted into the same mix, and it's, it's a bit inefficient and onerous to have some materials going only to me, some materials going to Will and me, or Will and me and Donna and the administrator, so I think it's clumsy and messy, and I, I just think it opens us up for errors. So I, I think that's great, if we do written reports, I think it's great. Presentations to the board, written format, you know, if possible, submitted on time, because we know a lot of times we have outside presenters where that may not be possible. I would just say, submit it the same way we submit it in 5.1, so we don't cause an unnecessary headache having two processes for materials that are going to the same packet. To the first issue Will raised, under option B, I, I think that there's a, I would say, a miss, I, I think that the use of the term township response is where, where I have concern. There's all sorts of township responses, I send emails, staff sends emails, Alex sends emails, Will sends emails, Jane sends emails, and each of them is as important as it is, could be super important or not important at all. That does not make it a township response. So I would say, there are times when one of us writes something and sends it that we think is significant on an issue. There may be a formal letter that the township sends, there may be an email I send that I think is just spot-on brilliant. I may choose to forward that correspondence to the clerk so that it can be included in the file and published. And so again, of course, the onus is on the author, because I am not all-knowing, I do not know what is sent, not everything comes to townshipboard@sciotownship.org. The clerk, however, does receive all general correspondence to the township, all of these are public records with very few exceptions to the disclosure of them, so if any individual board member receives correspondence intended for the board of trustees as a body, you forward that correspondence to the clerk. Everybody already does that as a common practice. The clerk shall maintain and regularly present the file of the correspondence received. And I put it, you know, I, we've, we've done some tagging in the system, and I do want to allow room for improvement for the correspondence file. Again, this correspondence file was never done until, I don't know, I think fall of 2019 I started doing it. I think it's important, one, for written public comment, I know that's been of interest, but I also think for raising issues that go to different matters that may or may not be on each agenda. So what I'd like to get to, and why this is vague, when it says the clerk shall maintain and regularly present the file of correspondence received, it's vague because I want to allow the room for improvement to further index by subject, so that we can get to the point where, let's say, over three months, six months, we're getting information on the East Del Hivarians, that all of that correspondence is in that subject file for us. So that's why it's vague, is just to allow some room for improvement.
So the file, if I may, the file of correspondence received, is that, does that differ from the sort of bundle of correspondence to the board that is part of the meeting packet for each of our regular rules?
No, it doesn't differ from that, and I would, for, for the time being, would regularly present it the way that we do it now, however, as we get better, because we're, we're starting to tag and sort, I would instead, you know, interfile it and have it presented with the relevant subject at the relevant time.
So it would, it wouldn't come just when it was, was received, it would come when there was an item on the agenda?
We would, we would figure that out, yeah.
Okay.
One or both.
So this is one of the, what you make, what you mean by sort of like room for development of this?
Yeah, well, because I think it could be more meaningful if we're getting it and looking at it, and, and we heard from, I can't remember who it was, one resident, was it Bonnie, from, one resident who's written thoughtfully on the East Del Hi, you know, when residents say like, hey, why do I have to write the same letters and the same emails to the planning commission and then to the board, and this and that, and more sophisticated jurisdictions, you know, are able to do that, so I, I do think the correspondence file, you know, again, it was never done before, submitted together, starting it, want to make it more sophisticated so it's more useful.
Okay. I think I understand. Are there other comments on these options? Oh, Alex.
I would just say that I agree in part with Jessica, in that it's not necessarily always clear which response should be included. I think a response should be included with the correspondence. The reason I say that is, quite honestly, it adds to the transparency of the township, because we're, we're showing you what our response is. Two, it provides public information. I'll use GFL as an example. When the supervisor has responded to some of the correspondence that's been received, understanding that that's a contentious issue. However, there's been very pertinent information, I think, that could be useful to them. And in many instances, it's also corrected misinformation that the public has presented in their, in the correspondence that he's, he and/or she and/or whoever else is responding to it can help clarify that. So I think there's a critical role in including the response. I do think that there are instances where, if I were to respond to one particular individual, that's different than responding as for the board and including the board. And I think there could be some work in terms of who, if you ask to have it included, but I think it's imperative that it is in the preponderance of cases, because I think it really does serve as for the township residents so that they understand. SAD is a great example, where they can understand if there has been an SAD, if there's only a proposed SAD, GFL. And I can go over and over again. And some of the concerns we've received correspondence about, I think they're very important to hear from the public. But I also think it's helpful to them to be able to get the response and have that included in the packet, because the person that's writing it doesn't know if the person, two houses down from them, if it's journeyed to them as well. So I think that's a benefit to the public as a whole. That's all I'll say. So I would like to see, I, I can, I think, see there could be improvement in terms of the language on how it's included. But I think it should be included as a de facto with correspondence from, from the public.
I'd see Trustee Noel answer your hand up.
Yeah, I disagree. I do not think that communication from the township should be included in the packet. I'm particularly concerned when incorrect information is given, which it has been given on occasion. I guess the most glaring example right now would be with the railroad street SAD that was proposed, and the characterization of the roads committee as being active during this time, when it wasn't. So my concern is that misinformation has been given. I can give you some more examples if you want them. I think we need to be very careful about how we characterize something as the township response. So I think we've got, there's some need for improvement in that area.
Other comments? Trustee Vogel.
Two thoughts. I don't have any problem moving the comment about written reports from boards and commissions. It's fine to move that to the second bullet in 5.1, but I think the verbiage currently in 5.2 is much better, starting with reports from. And then, something that we've talked about a ton, that I really just think is very important, is this quarterly rotation of verbal report outs. So you're getting the written report out every month, these words work well, put them over in 5.1, but then really to call out is a separate point, like a quarterly rotation of report outs at the board. These boards and commissions do so much great work in this township. They, they need the visibility of a quarterly report out, but every month is too much, because sometimes the meeting hasn't even happened, depending on the cadence. So that's one set of inputs. Kathy, I do hear what you're saying. Misinformation is a reality in any organization and needs to be attended to as diligently as we can. That said, I notice so much correspondence that gets responded to in very sort of gracious ways, with tangible information and specifics from the supervisor, often responding to something that's sent to the board as a whole. I think that furthers understanding in the community, and I would advocate strongly for including the response to correspondence that comes in from our residents.
Other comments? Oh, sorry.
Something to Alex's point, and I, I agree, Alex, about the adding the public information, correcting misinformation, and some of the value in that. One of the issues, though, is the onus, because, as I said, I receive all the general correspondence to the township. If any of you receive information that you think is really meant for the township or the township as a whole, you forward it to me, or Christie, or somebody in the office, right? But I really think the onus needs to be on the author of the response, because it, it can't be my job, or Christie's job, or somebody else's job, to go around and say, did you write something, did you write something, did you write something? And, and so that's where in option B I have, the board member may choose to forward that correspondence to the clerk, so that it may be included in the file and published. Because some responses, some, well, all are public and subject to disclosure, that is different than being published in the file. And so I would say, it's up to the board member to say, hey, like if Will, you know, replies to a complaint about GFL, he should, you know, be able to flag it and say, hey, Jess, please put that in the file.
Maybe I wasn't clear, and I totally
Does that make sense?
Yeah, because I, I guess I'm looking for some hybrid language, because I, that's what I was
What about, what about this?
Okay, that's
That there was no way that you could, if I, I respond to citizen X, and you don't know about it, why would you include it? Because you wouldn't
Right. And I don't want to be in the position of deciding which of your emails is the public.
So how about, how about language, something like this in option A? It is the responsibility of the respondent to transmit their correspondence to the clerk to be included in the record. So in other words, option A addresses the specific concern that the clerk just articulated.
So does B, actually. A and B both do.
They do. They both do. There's no difference between them on this subject.
So, so Will, but I'm just clarifying, because, because it sounds, I'm just hearing something different. I've also heard some trustees say, if the entire board is CC'd, then it should be included. Did I hear that from someone?
I don't know. Yes, I said that.
Okay. So that was different?
Yes.
Which is okay, I just want to
Because I just
work it out.
When, 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 when all of the township is included in that email, I, I feel that that is a, in some respects, a township response. I, I actually take stock of Kathy's comments as well. I think there could be a, once again, I don't know if we need to word smith this. I think we understand what we're trying to include in it, and the considerations that should be taken into account. But I, and I did say this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So are we ready? Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Corte.
I wanted to raise an issue that's, that's related to the inclusion of public comment in, in the board packet. It's not a rule of order. But I, I want to make sure that the public who, who email comments to the board actually understands that those will become part of the public record, including if they email, their, their email address will then be made public. And I think there's the simple solution of, on the website, anywhere where the communications to the township board, the email address is written, to just have a very simple, clear state, statement to say that, again, in each location where there is that township board address, that any comments emailed to the board will become part of the record as emailed, just so that people clearly understand.
Thank, thank you. That is a good suggestion.
I'll do that if there's no objection.
Are there other comments on these options, 5.2? Rule 5.3, regular meetings, deadline for submission.
I want to underscore, this is, this is ambitious and would change, change everything, but this deadline would be a firm deadline. It applies to me, it applies to Will, it applies to Jim, it applies to our planner, it applies to everyone. So it would be a real deadline, is part of the design of this, and this then flows into if items make the agenda or not. So I just share that, because the paradigm here is that it's a firm deadline, so if it's the wrong day and time, or something like that, we should consider that.
Trustee Jerome, and then Trustee Vogel.
Yeah, my only concern with that is that would, that would force, and that's fine, if we want to handle it that way. There are sometimes instances with some of the commissions that require immediate action, that does not afford a full week's
Sure.
notice. So it would force us to have a special meeting with regards to that one particular subject.
You could add it on, there, there's a provision for that later on.
Okay. I just, so I just want to make sure that we're comfortable with that, because that's the only instance I can think of, and it's happened multiple times, it happened. I, you know, presented in the past to the board in a very immediate fashion, just based on the fact that we needed to have action within sometimes 24 or 48 hours.
Certainly.
I can't remember, was it Trustee Vogel who was next? Yeah. And then Trustee Corte.
Um, while this is a great aspiration, I think it is a little too stretchy for our first, our first sort of enactment of some rules of order. It, this could easily be used as a little bit of a weapon, a little bit of a tool, to sort of, it, it's too aggressive. It seems like somewhere we said by Thursday, somewhere I read, there's a management meeting Wednesday. Tuesday feels like it's about two days too early. We barely get them out by Sunday night right now. I think if we maybe go with Thursday, it's a great interim to work toward Tuesday. But I personally think Tuesday is much too aggressive. It, it's not going to happen. And then, and then what do we do? We have a track record that would suggest we, we're going to get there.
Trust, Trustee Corte, and then, yeah.
Just, just to build on Trustee Jerome's point, I do think we need to figure out a very clear exception for time-sensitive matters that emerge in commissions that will really need to be addressed, even if that's not known by Tuesday, it's generally known by Thursday or Friday. So we need to have a very clear process for that. I will say, I hear trustees, Trustee Vogel's concern that this is maybe a bridge too far. I think it is actually a really good aspiration, and I think, you know, there might be a couple of bumpy meetings while we're adjusting to this, but at some point, when one has made the adjustment and gotten the whole schedule pushed back two days, then it should become the new norm. And the biggest challenge will be for those commissions that are meeting on a different schedule than ours, and maybe flowing information to us not quite on this schedule.
Corte.
Yes, I, you know, Will and I talked through the workflow of this, and trying to make it as clean as possible. What happens practically is, we get a lot of items late, and a lot of items half-baked. And so, I think that's the right term, right, Jim? Half-baked?
Half-baked.
Half-baked. And, and so I balance how much time I spend on cleaning up and correcting, you know, clarifying, has this been through the attorney, this or that? So there's some pre-meeting flow, that workflow that we've worked on. We met with the planning staff and finance staff around that. I would say Tuesday at noon would be fine, Wednesday at noon would be fine. Any later than that pushes me into working on the weekend, and Will into working on the weekend. And I'm really trying to not be working on, on Friday nights and Saturday mornings. So that's, that's why we have the Tuesday at noon, or Wednesday at noon, I think is still feasible. But we still practically need that, you know, 24 to 48 hours to pull it all together, because even with everybody's best efforts, there's going to be something that we need Jim to check on, or have somebody else to verify.
Trustee Fink, you look like you had something to say.
Jim, this, this is probably a good time to remind you that the purpose of the rules is not to tie up the board and keep you from getting your work done, but to, to give you some structure and predictability to how you're going to get your work done. And I, I think it's good to have a deadline so that no one is offended when they show up with something Tuesday morning and are told it can't be added to the agenda.
Exactly.
And I think you also need to give yourselves, as a board, or to, to give your three full-time officials, the ability to say, oh, we just got this from the county, and they need it by Wednesday, and, and we think it's a good thing, so we want to take it to the board. So you, you do need to have the ability to be flexible, but to, to not be, I almost used a word, I'm glad I didn't, to not have any structure at all. So, so I, I think you, 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 you might want to hedge a little bit on the language, or just make sure that you build in the ability of the board to accept something else for the agenda, either on the recommendation of the supervisor, or three trustees, or something, but so that you can handle things that come up that were not even contemplated on Wednesday when the deadline passed.
And I would just say, Jim, I, I believe our provisions later on provide for ways, ways to change, ways for late coming items. That said, I, I mean, I'd be open to Wednesday at noon. I don't want a fuzzy deadline, I want a clear deadline. I think that will make the process go better for us, Will. Do you want it to be 12 Wednesday instead of 12 Tuesday?
Well, why don't we, since we're not trying to pin things down, why don't we, we've sort of gotten a whole bunch of comments about this.
Okay.
We've, I think this has been a really helpful conversation.
It's helpful for you guys to talk through the workflow again, and then verify whether or not you can support the Wednesday.
Yeah, and, and Jim, thanks for keep, you know, keeping us focused on sort of making ourselves functional, as opposed to tying ourselves in knots. So I, I hear everything, I've written down notes. You know, we'll take all of this back and sort of, you know, work with it some more. 5.4, are we ready to move on to rule 5.4, special meetings, deadline for submission? Is there any comment? Trustee Vogel.
I've, I've got the basic, the same basic comment I made earlier, submitted to supervisor and clerk. I think there is great value in struct, in, in strengthening, focusing on, reinforcing this notion of the management team, leadership team, we're going to have in place in the township. So I would put the option on the table of items sent not just to the supervisor and clerk, but rather to the, the leadership team, supervisor and the leadership team. And again, if that's not a shared assumption, man, we've got some real conversation to have.
We really do.
Yeah, I think, I think that this is going back to that same question that to that same question that we, we sort of identified and put a placeholder on for another time. Are there other comments about item, uh, rule 5.4? Uh, rule 5.5, all meetings placement on agenda. So this, I guess in some ways ties back to the earlier kind of, you know, item in terms of there being a hard deadline. Sure, yeah, sorry, I didn't.
No, it's okay, if it, if it's helpful. So the, the step would be, this is why having a firm deadline, whatever it is, is helpful. So that then we can say if it's substantially incomplete or received after the deadline, will not be placed on the next regular agenda. But instead, they're going to be listed on the report. And if there's any materials that come in too, and we should probably include that. So, um, like there may be a fully developed, you know, item and packet of something that came in after that can be distributed. And the board can choose to add that to the agenda at the top of the meeting, but you would still have all the material ahead of time. So what I like about 5.5 and 5.9, and in the illustration I sent out on the agenda, I tried to kind of show how this would work. This provides some extra checks and balances so that it's really clear that items that have been submitted, items that have been tabled, items that were incomplete, that were late, you know, that we talked about three months ago and haven't come back, they all appear on a regular report under rule 5.9. So that it's sort of a checks and balances so that all the items that have been submitted that are not on the agenda appear in that regular report.
And further comments about rule 5.5?
I was comparing this to the Pitsfield model to just ensure some coherence. But this feels redundant to me. Either put it in 5.9 or put it up in, what was it? 5.3, but it, it feels like we're really sort of, we've got a theme here and it's getting over exercised. So let's just make sure we're not getting too tight, too prescriptive, prescriptive to Jim's point earlier. Be careful. Seems like we've got a lot of redundancy here.
I'm not sure, I guess, so trustee Vogel, you're seeing redundancy between 5.5 and 5.9? I mean, obviously 5.5 refers to it.
Yeah.
I guess, sort of skipping ahead, since we're talking about both of these, 5.9, potential problem I see there is that there are some times when things are tabled and do we really need to have like a reminder that something has been tabled? I mean, that, you know.
I think so. It's just a list.
Well, I suppose.
Will?
Yes.
How do you track, how do you track those items now? When things are tabled, how do you track them?
How do I personally track them? Well, I tend to remember things that were tables that are things that, you know, haven't yet been dealt with. So, for example, I don't know, earlier this year, Treasurer Palmer tabled something because she had a question about it. And I, we didn't table it, I think, well, we did table it to a meeting certain and a time certain. And so I knew that we had to resolve her questions before we got to that, you know, the time for setting the agenda for that next meeting. That's one example. I mean, there's different ways that things are tabled. Some things are tabled sort of indefinitely and things, some things are tabled to a time certain.
And, and Will, this is intended, and maybe the language isn't clear in 5.9, tabled for the future, tabled or otherwise remain pending with the Board of Trustees. And, you know, I, I just have a, you know, handwritten list of these. It's, you know, I, I do think it's important to, if, if any member, you know, as we said, you know, seven people bringing items, somebody has submitted an item, asked for an item, an item's been tabled for the future, like the, you know, recycling program or something like that. I do think it's helpful to, to just have a reminder of, of what our outstanding business is so that when we're mindful at the top of the agenda, adoption of the agenda, if there's, you know, something else, we may say, hey, you know what? Let's, let's make sure to hear that at the next meeting. Or people can also see, oh, I submitted this item, but it's not on the agenda. I submitted it two days late. You all have the materials. Could we adopt the agenda to add this late arriving item? So it would then be a decision of the board at that point rather than going from Thursday to Tuesday with revised agendas, amended agendas, that completely confusing chaos that I hope we avoid.
Um, trustee Vogel.
I'd like to try to elevate this to a more strategic frame if we could. Sure, tactically, let's keep a list of items that got deferred or weren't ready or got tabled. Of course, that's helpful. Something I'd really like to see in, in one of these items, is the right place to put it. I would really look to this leadership team, again, the three officers and this new administrator, to have a three-month look ahead. Will is supervisor and leader of the committee. A three-month look ahead that really ensures we're taking on the major issues, the strategic issues. Maybe there is even a cadence over the course of a year when you know when certain things come up, like the budget in March. I would really value seeing a three-month look ahead, an annual cadence, so that, so that the agenda comes out of that context and not just sort of, oh, here's a set of items we have to cover next week and here's the list of all the things that we haven't gotten to in recent meetings. It's helpful, but we're going to have more impact if we can bring a little more of that strategic focus. Three-month look ahead, annual cadence. And I'd like to see some verbiage accordingly in here.
Good idea.
Okay, moving on to rule 5.6, regular meetings, order of business. Are there comments on this? Trustee Corteau.
I actually just had a question. Again, just for context and history, how have special orders been used? I mean, can you just give me an example of like, what's an instance when a supervisor might set an item as a special order?
I don't think we've, this is kind of a new idea for, for SIO Township, so there's no history. Are you, are you saying in general, how would it work?
Yes, well, if we haven't done it, then yes, how would it, in general?
Sure, it's, it's a really nice tool to use. So let's say that we want to bend over backwards to accommodate our township attorney's schedule at his early bedtime. And we know he goes to bed at 8:00 PM and he's only available at 7:45 PM for an item. Then we could, say on the agenda, maybe it's item three, it would say three, special order, 7:30 PM. And no matter what we're doing, at 7:30 PM, without objection, the supervisor would then call the item to accommodate the township attorney's bedtime. So we wouldn't really do that for the township attorney's bedtime or for any other reason.
If you did, I would give a discount on my hour.
A discount on yours. We'll keep you here as long as we possibly can. But, but if you, if you have something, a special order, let's say that the governor were going to show up at our meeting, we would have a special order. Anytime she shows, walks in the door, we're going to have a special order. So, so what it does, it gives the supervisor the authority to basically interrupt the order of the agenda and at a certain time, call that special order item. So it would be designated specially on the agenda. And I think that's helpful so that we are not feeling like, oh, we got to hurry up on this item because so-and-so has arrived or dynamics like that.
Okay, are there other questions? Oh, trustee Noel.
Yeah, upon 5.6, a couple of questions. I had made a remark in my notes here that it should be supervisor and clerk shall finalize the order. But I guess if we want to be consistent, we can call it supervisor, clerk, treasurer and administrator.
No, no.
Okay.
That's chaos.
Okay.
And the clerk has already set the preliminary order. On 5.5.
So you're.
Will and I talked at length about how this would work for us.
Okay. Good enough. And then I'm wondering about, and substance of the agenda, what is the importance of substance of? Is that relevant?
Well, it's what items are, what items are included, I think is, is the implication of substance. And the order of them is, is the order.
So, so we have a, a deadline. And so we know that, I mean, obviously there'll be, you know, some exceptions, but if, if items are submitted by the deadline and ready to go and on there, I, I would think, we, we have never had too many items ready to go.
Too many added, but not too many had to be ready.
We haven't ever had too many items ready to go. And if we, you know, move forward with better preparation, you know, with things more processed, you know, I would say there shouldn't be a need to cut any items. If they're ready, they'd be on. I think that would be the only change, Will.
Well, I think, I, this gets at a, a question that has, that has some, it's worth some consideration. Because there are situations where items might come that people feel are ready and, and there's a determination that for whatever reason, an item should be delayed. And the person who is bringing the item might not agree. But, you know, it's not just, the agenda isn't formed simply by who gets in line on time and has their agenda item ready. There's some judgment calls that are occasionally made about whether, you know, all items that are sort of queued up, whether they're polished and finished or not, are ready for that particular agenda. And it could be, we have too many things on the agenda. You know, we're trying to manage the flow of work. We have some things that are, that we know are going to take more time and are higher priority. So we're bumping something to the next meeting that's less urgent, so on. There's, there's some judgment calls that I think you can, we can all imagine would need to be made. Uh, trustee Vogel.
I just want to do a time check for us. We have been in conversation for two and a half hours. We are on 5.7 of 14.1. And we need to find a way to sort of pick up our pace. And see if we can begin to move through important conversations. I just want to notice how much is still in front of us.
Clerk Flinton.
Sure, two things on, on 5.6. I do think we need to talk about that then. Will, my, my understanding was if the items are ready, the order is preliminary set, and then you finalize the order, that that was that. I would say as, as a safety valve, if there's, say, an item, like, I don't know, like two weeks ago, I brought an item to you, you said, no, I don't want to talk about that. Then that would show up on the items submitted, not placed on the agenda. So I do think it's important when we say, this is a board meeting and a board agenda, the agenda isn't actually adopted until we adopt the agenda. So at the end of the day, I don't think it really, with the design that we have, I don't think it has much bearing if those words and substance, if, if the supervisor determines to remove items from the, prepared items from the agenda, they will show up in that report with the materials so that they're in front of the board so that the board can make the final determination as we do legally at every meeting.
So just to clarify, what I said when you came to me and asked to put an item on the agenda was not, I do not want to talk about that. I said, it's not ready. I said, if we're going to talk about that, we should talk about it at the Budget and Finance Committee. And you asked me again, and then you asked me again. And my answer was the same each time. It's not ready, we should talk about it at the Budget and Finance Committee. Now we can move on, that we've clarified that.
Can, can I add one thing to the order here? I do, I do want to, oh, please don't scoff. I, I want to note Pam Boyd and Will have raised the question of pledge of allegiance, which doesn't appear in our items. So if we want to add that back in, we should.
Yes.
We, we did always do it. And then when we moved to Zoom in April, and we'd have to ask Jack, I really can't quite remember, other than I had seen the Wasna County Board of Commissioners try to all say the pledge of allegiance on Zoom, and it was a disaster. And, and that's really why we stopped doing it, lack of coordination. So it's an open discussion for the board.
Well, I think the understanding I had was that was the reason. But I think now we go back into saying it.
Okay.
You know, there's enough of us here and people can join in at home if they so choose.
I guess if they're muted, then it doesn't matter if they're saying it out of sync with the rest.
Yeah, I just think by April, people hadn't figured that out.
Okay. So there's interest in adding the pledge of allegiance back?
We should be singing it if we can.
Okay. I, I guess it actually would come after the call order and the rule call, right? Okay. Item five, or, uh, rule 5.7, special meetings, order of business. I guess the only thing I would note is that as in situations like we have tonight, I think it makes sense to move public comment to the end if the substance of the special meeting is board discussion because then people can react to the board discussion rather than sort of having us react to the public comment.
You could add a placeholder in both as, as in above.
All right, unless there are other comments. Rule 5.8, distribution of agenda and packet. Are there comments from members of the board trustees?
I just want to flag again, I'm happy to do this. This is a responsibility of the board that would be delegated to the clerk. I just wanna flag again, I'm happy to do this. This is a responsibility of the board that would be delegated to the clerk.
Rule 5.9, items submitted not placed on the agenda. So this is what we were sort of jumping ahead to talk about earlier. And I guess, um, in some ways, um, I now have a, a clear understanding of sort of what that represents to different people. I'm not sure the utility of it in all cases, but I can see the utility of it in some cases. Are there other comments from other members of the board of trustees? Trustee Noel and trustee Vogel.
I'm gonna go back to 5.8. I'm sorry. Um, I just wanna comment that previously, when we had a manager, the manager was largely responsible for putting together the agenda, excuse me, putting together the packet and distributing the packet to board members. So I'm wondering, indeed, with our potential hire of an administrator, if they're gonna want to be involved with that process? Because that's typically something that that person would do. And I don't know how you feel about that, Jessica.
Yeah, I just wanna clean workflow. I think, um, you know, this is the way that we, we have it, the, the distribution. I think it's easier to, um, you know, I could certainly, you know, delegate it, coordinate with, share it with. I don't think it needs to be written, written into, I, I wouldn't want the board delegating it to two different people. It's just the distribution at that point. Um, so it's just cleaner to have a single point of responsibility.
Trustee Vogel, you had your hand raised?
Uh, yes, are we back on 5.9?
Yes.
Again, sort of stepping back, maybe a more strategic view on this. Well, we seem to be talking lots about keeping this list going of all the things we haven't attended to, but, but all those various items represent work to be done, important, um, uh, topics for the township to attend to, township management. So again, what I would look for in 5.9 is some, uh, verbiage about providing the list again to the township leadership team. So those items are getting attended to. Whatever was underprepared, not yet ready, needing more work to be done, it's that leadership team that's gonna get that work done, whether it's treasurer-related, clerk-related, supervisor-related, or township administrator-related. So beyond keeping the list, getting the real work done is gonna be centered in that leadership team.
So, so maybe it's the last sentence, um, that's really.
Well, you guys figure the sentence out. We have lots, lots to go here.
Okay.
That makes sense.
All right. Um, so, um, let's move on then to rule 5.10, additional or revised materials submitted after posting.
Oh, shoot. I'm sorry. I gotta finish the thought on 5.9.
Oh, all right.
That actually, Will, might be the place to have this three-month look ahead on the agenda, the more strategic view.
That's what I noticed.
Because you could be looking at this list and saying, "Oh, my gosh, that fits into the annual cadence here." Or in a three-month look ahead, these items slot in here. So I think that whole sort of more strategic frame comes into this. And then the work gets centered at the leadership team. Thank you. Sorry. Pretty.
I think that's a good point. It's, it's, it's about the, it's about keeping track of unfinished business and, and looking at and planning for when to get it done.
Exactly. And the who gets it done, man, the four of you are gonna be it. It's like, why don't you better be picking up the ball?
Well, it, it, under your, your leadership team model, yes. Um, but that's not necessarily, that's another conversation. Are we ready to move on to rule 5.10? Sure.
Um, I would suggest a, a, just small change to 5.10. Last sentence, any updated materials, which, which does happen, right? Additional materials in the packet or something. Um, I think what's efficient and feasible is that can add them to the packet, posting them publicly, and designate them as updated from that previously posted. So put like a updated stamp or something like that on those pages. I'm just trying to think what's feasible, Will.
Sorry, I was looking at what the text was.
Oh, uh, so on, on that same thought, my only problem with that is I do wanna draw a distinction between, you know, sometimes we're getting updated materials the same day as, and, and I think there should be a limit to when you can provide updated materials. Um, I mean, if you have done a job of creating a substantially complete report, I think it might be incumbent upon the person who remembers presenting it to, I just get a little bit concerned because unfortunately, we've been receiving materials at the last second. I'm speaking just for myself.
Sorry.
Where, or maybe I'm speaking for the public, where we just haven't had an opportunity to review them. And then I don't feel then that we're having a, a real informed discussion with regards to it. So I like having a distinction that they're updated versus the original submittal. But I do think that there might be a time limit, that, you know, they can't be brought in the same day or 24 or 48, you know. I think there's, uh, there's can be a happy medium in there somewhere that would prevent that. So that we are getting materials so that we can actually, they're useful to the conversation. That's my only concern.
Good evidence.
Uh, trustee Corto.
I do appreciate having materials flagged as updated, and I wonder whether there might be an additional step of on the website having, you know, right now there's agenda, and then there's agenda and packet. Maybe there could be agenda supplements or agenda updates. Because it can be really hard when we have a long packet to download the updated version and figure out what's where. And, and especially if anybody is dealing with internet restrictions and, and having to download a large packet repeatedly and then kind of collate where the updates are. So just like, just, you know, one more tab, just supplements, updates, whatever.
Yeah, let me look into some solutions for that. I, I agree with the concerns.
Trustee Vogel. Oh, you're muted.
I completely support what trustee Corto just said. It's like you get through the deck once and, and, and I'll write the page number for a comment I wanna go back to and discussion, but then the page numbers change because material got added to the base deck. So, really like Jacqueline's idea. Also wanna request that, that somehow the agenda items have a, have a page number in, for the packet. So we can, I mean, I can't tell you how many times I've been flipping through up and down, trying to find something. And if we could know that item E3 is page 167 in the deck, it'd be really helpful.
Okay, I, let me look into solutions. I, I think that's, that's good, good feedback. I agree with the need. I would also, for the immediate case, also refer people to the, um, I'll share out with you the hyperlink Agenda 2, which will always take you to the correct page for those agendas. So let me figure out how to make that simpler.
I mean, I can think of some situations we have where this could be problematic, like we, at our last, I think it was our last meeting, um, we, there was a resolution that we determined after the meeting packet had gone out, contained, um, an error and had to be redone. And, um, coincidentally, um, information that informed that resolution also arrived late. And so in, you know, sort of updating, correcting that error in the resolution, we were also able to update it with that new, um, information. And so we had something that was more accurate and up to date to vote on as opposed to what was sent out with the packet. So if, if there's a way to sort of allow for that kind of, um, I guess nimbleness in, in the, in the moment, um, to, to respond to, you know, changing situations and correct, you know, the ability to correct errors, I think that would be good to allow ourselves. Are there other comments? Let's move on to, um, rule 5.11. Adoption of the agenda. Are there any comments on that? All right. Oh, trustee Vogel.
The only observation I would offer is this potentially seems inconsistent with 5.9. It seems like earlier we said can't have any items, and this one seems to have a provision for adding or removing items. So it seems like there's an inconsistency here.
Sure.
This is, this step is, um, later in the process. So it's as we do at the top of every meeting with the adoption of the agenda. Legally, there is no final agenda until the board adopts it. And so we always have the right to add or remove items. Um, we have the bar for adding, removing, or substantially changing an item at majority vote of those present. It could be a higher bar or a lower bar. I think that's, that's reasonable. But we don't have an adopted agenda. It's always proposed until the board adopts it.
Does that help? Okay, um, any further comments? Rule 5.12, revised meeting packet. This is some, we sort of were just talking about that. I think in some ways, it's a question you're gonna look into and see what sort of options there are.
Yeah, these are two different things. So this is post-meeting. Um, another thing I started doing after I was appointed clerk was, um, trying imperfectly to collect the written materials that the public give us during meetings that are distributed during a meeting, whether it's physically or, or electronically.
Oh, I see.
Um, so let's say that a member of the public shares a video during their public comment. Or like with the last meeting, somebody comes and hands me a stack of paper. Those really ought, should be treated as, you know, part of the meeting packet, the revised meeting packet. So this is, uh, after the meeting. Um, this is what I do with, um, such as a, not just a, a late arriving item before the meeting, but anything given to us at the meeting. And it, it, it helps us, I find, just with our, um, records and historical record of our work.
Okay, so this is, in some ways, this is sort of a record-keeping.
Yeah, this is after the meeting. Everything's gonna get smacked together into one file.
Okay. Um, next is, uh, rule six, or this, or this is like, uh, sort of a group of rules, conduct of meetings. Um, we'll just work through these item by item. Uh, rule 6.1, chairperson. And, um, I believe this is statutory, right?
Mm-hmm.
Other comments? Rule 6.2.
Kathy has it.
Oh, I'm sorry. So late arriving hand. Trustee Noel.
Um, I just wanted to call your attention to, and I put this in my comments that I had submitted. Per the MTA suggested rules of engagement for chairing a meeting. This is what they suggest. Supervisor shall remain neutral, listen well, remain dedicated to serving the needs of the entire board. This might include checking in with board members. The chair should not cut off discussion prematurely. As a general rule, the chair should try to reach consensus. Majority vote is the last resort. I just think we should keep these in mind and it should be a priority for the board. Because I think we would flow better as a group if some of these were happening on a more regular basis. It's not in our rules, I understand that, but I just wanna say, these were in the MTA model rules of engagement.
Are there other comments? Rule 6.2, permission to speak.
I just wanna note where this deviates from past practice. Um, if three members of the board approve, a member of the public will be permitted to address the board during consideration of an item. I think it's a nice additional provision. We haven't had that before. And I think it reduces the chance of favoritism or something. Now, um, this can come up when, um, let's say that we're talking about Gelman and Roger Rail is in the public. There may be three of us who say, "Let's ask Roger Rail to speak at this moment." So it gives, um, the board a chance to, um, hear from a member of the public during their, our consideration of an item.
So how that might work is, say, Kathy might say, "Oh, I see Roger or Dan or somebody else in the audience." Um, you know, "Is there any objection?" And I suppose.
Are there two other members in support?
Um, probably the way I can imagine it working is someone saying, "Is there any objection?" And then if someone objected, then you would say, "Are there two other members in support?" But most likely, um, it would just be everyone sort of agreeing and saying, "Yes, why don't you step up to the table and speak?" Or raise, you know, take yourself off duty if we're participating remotely. But yeah, I, I think that's a nice sort of option of flexibility to have.
Yeah, whatever.
Trustee Vogel.
I would, for consistency, say just move that to section eight then. So everything around public comment is in one place.
This would be outside of public comment, but we could move it. But just to be clear.
Okay, um, rule 6.3, speaker not to be interrupted.
He suggests common courtesy.
Yeah.
I, I mean, how, well, of course, it feels like, I, I kinda wrote in my notes, do we need them? Because it could be the beginning of a whole set of sort of good etiquette.
Other comments? Um, item, or, uh, rule 6.4, limitations on speaking.
I think this could depend, probably it does depend on the item. As people start to express their feelings, it can be an ongoing discussion, meaning someone may speak more than, than twice. Because as you say something, I may think of another point. And it would be hopefully a good thing, you know, in the discussion.
Built upon it.
So you might say, I don't know. I don't know if we should limit that. It's, it's rare perhaps, but it could be important.
So you think this is, um, because our attorney was saying earlier, sort of tying, tying ourselves up unnecessarily?
Well, I'm gonna say yes. Because here again, I don't know very many times, but. Because here again, I don't know very many times, but it could be important. We're trying to get all the information out to make a good decision.
Trustee Carteau and then trustee Noel.
Can I just clarify that then? Because I guess what I read was members cannot speak again until any other member who would like to, who has not spoken and wishes to speak. So I guess I wasn't reading that as though we're not allowing people to have a second or third or fourth round, we're just making sure that everybody get a, gets a first round? Is that...
Rounds three and four would be following everyone's first round, essentially. Okay. I think those, I read this differently, I read it as sort of those two things being kind of separate, but... That's an opportunity for clarity in language, you know.
Yeah. And I will say, you know, I wrote, this is a combined language from something I authored and something Will authored, and I think that's where we're having the issue, Jackie. The same stage of the, same subject, same stage of the proceeding is not the same as one item. Given Donna's good input, I would suggest cutting that first sentence, if not the whole thing. I do think the members who have once spoken on a particular matter shall not be again entitled to the floor so long as any member who has not spoken desires to speak. I think that's good.
That's courtesy again.
Yeah, yeah. But the rest seems problematic.
Yeah, we don't keep time, so, and the board, and the board members' comments, no one's, no one's keeping track of time, so it'd be difficult to enforce even if we chose to.
We're the ones doing the business.
Yeah.
You've got to be able to do it.
Well, you've got some hands up.
Sorry, I'm, it's, this is the challenge of this, is I start staring down at the text to understand it. Trustee Noel.
Okay, I agree with Donna's comment. I think that board members should be allowed to make comments, ask questions, engage in discussion as long as needed. I mean, some topics are more complicated and nuanced than others, and they're going to require more than two round robins of discussion. So I would support removing that whole first sentence. It's fine for people to wait until everyone has spoken before they speak a second time, I don't have a problem with that. But I think that it's not appropriate to limit board members to two round robins, and the interest of the communities, of the community is not well-served if we're going to put arbitrary limits up in the discussion of board members. So I think this one, for me, is very important. And I, we aim on to remove the whole thing.
Mr. Fink.
You do have the option under Roberts' rules for someone to call a question.
Right, yes.
And so you...
That would work.
Regardless of whether you adopt this rule, someone can always move to call the question, and that lays it on the board to determine whether the discussion is going to end.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
It is, I can see that this desire to have the ability for everyone to participate and to participate more than once is sort of at odds with what we were talking about earlier about having meetings that ended, you know, at a reasonable hour.
I don't think so.
Right.
Potentially. Trustee Vogel.
I guess an observation I'd offer about this whole section six is, it feels a little suboptimized to me. We've got some fairly prescriptive things, we're softening those with some good inputs, but I guess I would encourage you, this seems like the place, you're just getting some ground rules out there about good, good rules of engagement, rules of conduct, it would be the place to sort of have some language, maybe MTA as a source, that just talks about respectful conduct at a board meeting. So it feels like we sort of picked a couple particular things, but feels like we maybe missed the whole. And this feels like it might be looking for a revisit.
Okay. Are there other comments on 6.4? Can we move on to 6.5, use of private messaging by members?
Way too prescriptive.
I felt very strongly about this because truly, we're, there's no way, if we are communicating via text message, email, or other technology with a member of the public, with each other, with our girlfriend, with whoever, we're most likely violating the OMA. We should not be texting or any communication about the substance of the meeting in progress with others during the formal meeting. The meeting happens here in public. And so this is a good guideline, you know, our, the prior jurisdiction I worked in, our city attorney advised all of us of this, to avoid sereato meetings and to avoid, you know, deliberating in private inadvertently. So again, there may be a privileged communication, there may be something during the meeting that I catch Jim think about. Now, aside from that, I really shouldn't be texting with a developer who's coming before us, with Will who's sitting next to me, with anybody else about the substance of the meeting. I think it's bad form, and I think it at least gives the appearance, if not creates a reality, where we're deliberating in private about the substance of the meeting instead of in public where we're obligated to deliberate.
What about just two words? That aloud.
There you go.
Well, I think, I think what we talked about is how there could be reasons for text messaging, for example, when it's not about the substance of the meeting, but it's about logistics of the meeting. For example, somebody who's trying to participate remotely can't get in, they're probably desperately trying to connect with somebody who can help them solve the problem so that they can get into the meeting.
Exactly.
That, that kind of messaging would be permitted because it's not substance of the meeting.
Right.
So I, so I think we're able to move on to item seven, or Rule 7, disruption of meetings. And I think here, we wrestled with a lot of different language from other sources and sort of settled on this.
We cleaned it up to make sure it was legal and as, you know, and, and when, it's really if a person commits a breach of the peace, the chairperson may request the sheriff to remove the person from the meeting. A breach of the peace, it's a crime, it's, it's, that would be the only reason. And everything above that is really just meant to be disruption and what the direction to the supervisor is for addressing that.
But it's, it's not someone who's making a comment with which the supervisor or chairperson disagrees, it's someone who's shouting and, you know, interfering with the ability of everyone else to conduct business. All right, so let's move on. Now we're into, I think probably the area where there's going to be a lot of discussion. This is Rule 8, which actually has many parts and, and several different options to consider. So there's, I guess to start with, perhaps, there's a set of, of, sort of a bundle of rules that are Option A and entitled right of the public to attend, report, and comment at meetings. There's an alternative bundle, so that, and that commences on page 10. There's an alternative bundle entitled public comment, which is Option B, and that begins on page 11 and continues on to page 12. And then there are some subsequent sections, we'll, we'll deal with those separately.
I can briefly go over it.
Sure, if, if we can do it quickly, we could.
So Option A is, is what I'm recommending affirmatively states, members of the public may attend all meetings of the board by attending in person or via remote participation. The public right to attend meetings does not expose, extend to closed sessions, obviously. I will remind people that it was not in the too distant past, I can remember a meeting in May 2019, special meeting of the board, was not posted, and there was even a question about if there was public comment allowed. So I think it's important that we affirmatively state this. Recording, as is the law and is the reality, member of the public may record, photograph, or broadcast meetings of the board using their own resources. Identification, each person interested in making public comments shall be invited to identify themselves by name, and if they reside in Scioto Township, we all want to know who we're talking to. But no one shall be required to do so in order to provide public comment. The state law says that people are not required to provide their name in order to attend a meeting virtually or in person. It does not state, it is up to the board rules of if they need to, if they're required to provide their name to make a public comment. And so this, we would invite people to do so, but not require. Also, in the past, for public hearings, we were required to ask for addresses. When we moved to remote with these meetings recorded, I personally sort of moved away from asking everybody for their address because it felt a little uncomfortable to have that personal information all recorded out there being broadcast. So I would suggest that we just ask people if they want to share their name and if they reside in Scioto Township. Content of public comment?
A point, please.
Point.
I thought though, with public hearings, it is a different situation.
It is.
That they need to state name and address. Yes, in our world today, you know, it's tricky, but...
It is, Donna, and, and that's why we would address rules for public hearing differently. You're absolutely right that that's required for public hearing. Content, oh, Will, Jackie has it.
Oh, trustee Carteau.
So I, if I heard you right, Jessica, you just said that the state rules are that the public are not required to identify themselves in order to attend a meeting.
Correct.
So this suggests to me that reading aloud the names of participants on Zoom meetings is counter to that?
You know, that's a really, really good point. I mean, they're not required to provide it, but yeah, it's a question of interpretation. I mean, some people show up as Samsung Galaxy 5.
And I would say the same for people that, when they do return to public, there's a lot of publics that come to these meetings that don't want to be identified, they don't want to have their names read out loud, that they come to...
Right.
Listen, but if they want to be identified, obviously they come up to speak to your public comment.
Right.
So I'd be very hesitant to...
Right.
Assume that people want to be part of that public record, just the same way that Jackie had suggested, that we let them know that their correspondence is going to be public.
Exactly. And that's why we get away with the sign-in sheets here physically at the meetings, Jackie, but you're absolutely right that with this remote environment, it's a good consideration. So thank you. So 8.4, content of public comment, it should be germane, other than that, it's, it's all fair game. It can be video, it can be modern dance, whatever it is. Form of communication, people do this via live, real-time voice comment. I would say during public comment period, I would say during a public comment, I do think real-time Zoom chat, a video chat, whatever it is, would be okay way to provide a written public comment in real time to have that written and, and one of us read it out, audio or video, anything else. Time limit, each person shall be limited to three minutes per comment, per public comment opportunity. I am a fan of three minutes, we used to have five minutes, but only two opportunities. I find most people complete their comments within three minutes. I'm open to changing that amount, but I think the frequency and timing of public comment is more important. The board responds, people may briefly respond. And then there's really three types of public comment. Public comment, and I'd ask that the board please look at 8.8, 8.9, and 8.10 alongside the agenda, sample agenda that I sent out to kind of show how it would be operationalized. So really, there's public comment opportunity on any matter under the purview of the board. There, there should be at least one, so one at the beginning of every regular meeting, optionally, one also at the end, though I agree with a comment Alex made a long time ago, I think that one is less important if we've designed good public comment throughout. I want to make sure people understand the time limit is per opportunity, so there'd be on any matter under the Board of Trustees at the top and the bottom of the meeting. 8.9, for items that are on for discussion only, at all meetings, the public shall have the opportunity to comment on those items either prior to or during the board's consideration, not after. Under Rule 5, the supervisor could decide if he would like to put that at the top of public comment to say, hey, at this time, we want to hear any public comment on any matter under the board, any matter under the purview of the board, or any of the items listed here for discussion only, or if he would want to hear public comment during each discussion item. And that may change, because with something like the Railroad Street SAD, we may want to have that discussion during the item, other things of less consequence, we may want to hear it top. Importantly, and I think raising the bar for this board is 8.10, public comment opportunities on items on agenda for possible action. I mean, as a public servant, I, I think it's incredibly important to hear from the public after they've heard our deliberation and before we take a vote. And we don't always do that. We've done much more of that in this board than the board before, but I would suggest we raise the bar for ourselves and say that there shall be public comment on each motion that has been made and seconded, either before or after board discussion, and in all cases before the vote is called. And I think about certain items such as the June 22 resolution for in-person meetings, we considered it after midnight, the resolution itself was silent on public participation and on its face, but the meaning of it was very different. And without that discussion that we had, I certainly, and, and I think the rest of us wouldn't have understood enough about the issues to determine which direction we wanted to go. And it was really important to have public comment there. So I tried to kind of outline how it would work, but there would be more opportunities at more points in time to help inform our decisions.
Okay, so that's Option A. Option B is a bit simpler, and I think in part that's because it's drawn from other, another model, and that other model is a little bit, you know, sort of more Spartan. I don't think all of the things that are listed in Option A... I don't think all of the things that are listed in Option A necessarily require being included in Rules of Order. And I think public comment in Option B is sufficient. I, I don't, I don't see a need for having public comment sort of managed in the way that, that Option A does. This is simpler in the sense that it allows public comment, Option B allows public comment on whatever the public chooses to comment on at two points in the meeting, at the beginning and at the end. And in the middle, that's the time when the board is doing its work. And I understand that some people feel that it would be helpful to the board to have comments on each agenda item throughout the meeting. I disagree. I think, you know, we can get the input from the public on those agenda items if the public wants to comment, wants to offer input at the beginning of the meeting. Or we can have, you know, reactions to actions or items that have been just discussion at the end of the meeting. There, there's opportunities for public input, but the meetings, the board meetings are not about the conversation with the public. They're not town hall meetings. There are opportunities for the board to do work as a board of trustees. So I think in some ways, there's a different philosophy. These, these represent a different philosophy about public comment. And I think in some ways, that's really the crux of this. And I, I know there are some who see our meetings, the Board of Trustees meetings, as sort of a dialogue with the public. And I think that's a misunderstanding of what these meetings are meant to be. These meetings are meant to be a time for the board to do the work of the board. Most of the authority of the Board of Trustees is vested in the board as a whole. So these meetings are the sort of precious time that the board has an opportunity to actually exercise that authority when we're all together in a public meeting viewed by the public, for sure, and accessible to the public, but not necessarily as a sort of conversation with the public. So there's opportunities that we would afford, of course, for the public to comment and to have input. And I think, as has been pointed out many times before, public comment during meetings is not the only way that the public has to communicate with the Board of Trustees and to let us know of what the public's views are on a particular matter that we may be deliberating on. It's not, it's not a meeting with the public. It's a meeting of the Board of Trustees. It's a public meeting in which the public has a, a time to participate, but it's not, it's not just a town hall kind of format. So that's what this represents, and I think that's the difference in philosophy that this represents. Are there comments from other board members?
Well, one thought. If we can attain the schedule of getting the agenda, the materials out early enough, which we've, you know, been talking about, they're also available to the public. So here again, they would be able to comment, you know, the first comment section. They would have had an opportunity to read those and be able to, you know, pass on some thoughts. And that's, to me, that would be better than after every single item. That's where we're really struggling. I want them to, to comment, but they have to have the materials they had to, to feel like they can offer something whichever way their feelings are. Maybe that'll help us with this, giving them the right, but giving us a chance to do the work.
Trustee Noem.
Well, I think it has been important to hear public comment related to any action items. So Will, with this Option B proposal, just clarify, that would not be included in Option B. Is that correct?
Yeah, so Option B is two public comment periods at the beginning, at the end, which I believe is how the board handled public comment in the past.
It is, but I will say that I think there are many members of our public who have liked it the way it is right now with the option to comment before a vote on an action item. And I just want to remind people that the public comment period use, public comment timeframe used to be five minutes. It got cut to three minutes with this board. And part of the rationale given when that cut was made was that public comment was going to be offered before the vote on each action item. So I have some concerns about eliminating it. I would then support Option A. And I think that people should remember that our job isn't just to come to these meetings and churn out decisions. Our job as elected township officials is to serve the public, and we need to listen to what people are saying. I think that's been a concern that many residents have had with this board, that they're not, that they have the sense that this board isn't listening to them. So I would not favor removing the public comment option from the action items.
Are there other comments from other members of the Board of Trustees? Trustee Jerome.
Yeah, I, I think we all recognize the importance of the public comment. I guess I, I'm leaning towards in-between maybe with, in Jim's realm of one seems extremely prescriptive and one seems not prescriptive enough. I, I just, I just want to acknowledge that we're, we're looking for a way and means to properly integrate public comment while allowing us to do the business of the township, which allows for, you know, maximum input from citizens. But I, I will also say that, that I think Donna makes a very good point. If we would provide them with materials so that they could comment via email, which we receive lots of, or other forms, that would be helpful. I, I do feel that, and as I have complained about personally, when I've received documentation the day of a, a meeting, I don't have time to review it. You know, a lot of us are, are busy during the day. And so if I was presented with materials that I felt were necessary for a meeting and I couldn't comment on because I never even had the chance to look at them, I think that is an issue. But I think that what Donna was bringing up would help alleviate some of those concerns if people had ample time to review things that could correspond with the BOT or, or talk with the BOT or write to the BOT in a much more comprehensive, intelligent, you know, way because they, everyone had the information in front of them. I think that's still a sticking point for the public and for us, is that sometimes we're working with, out having the opportunity to truly reflect and take a look at these. I mean, we've all commented. We have meeting packets that are two and three hundred pages long, and it takes a long time to review all that. If you only have it a day in advance or two days in advance, quite honestly, it's impossible to review it as accurately and as thoroughly as it should. So I just, I, 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 I hear both sides, and I just wanted to appreciate that.
Trustee Vogel.
Yeah, I guess I, I want to start with the observation. Again, Pittsfield's kind of a reference point for me. They've dealt with this in two simple little sections. We've dealt with it in ten and, and six respectively. This has all been said already. I think we've experimented with much more public comment during the meeting, and as, as others have said, we are seeking the right balance between the very important public input and the BOT as the one working forum we have. This is it. It's all done in the public eye. And given all of these improvements we're talking about, all the material getting out ahead of time, I am in favor of reverting to where the previous board was, the public comments at the beginning, the public comments at the end, and then preserve the agenda for just getting the work done that needs to be done. Let me just get to my notes here a minute. I, I think in, yeah, I, I am much more oriented to Option B. I think we need to keep this simple, not overly complicated, get too prescriptive. I do hear one particular voice from the public at the beginning of eight point two in Option B. I do think there need to be some established and recorded agreements. We talk about speaker and public shall obey all rules announced by the moderator. I think those do need to be established, recorded, well-known in the public. So that is one little modification I would offer. I, I don't know that we need, don't disturb the speaker at the table. It's, it's like, yes, that's just good common sense and courtesy. So again, I would just favor, I, I keep it simple moment. And I think the, the Pittsfield Rules of Order, six point four, six point five, are a good reference point.
Trustee Corto, did you have something to say?
Well, I'm trying to weigh the various options. And I have to say that when our board started, I had listened to many previous board meetings, and I, I really thought integrating comments throughout action items made a lot of sense. And now that we have been doing this for many months, I'm not sure that I see that we're getting feedback directly relevant in those action items that is different than what we would get at the beginning, at the end. So again, circling back around to Trustee Jerome's comment, as we're trying to find the right balance of getting all the input we can and also actually doing the work, it, it, it does feel like, as Trustee Palmer pointed out, having, having those conversations integrated in every action item does take up a lot of time. So, you know, maybe this is an area where we say, let's do a provisional rule. Let's wait until our packets have been, our materials have been ready in advance for, you know, we've followed that deadline, we've gotten the materials out there. Let's try this for three months, three months or six months. But, and again, finally, you know, circling back around to what Attorney Fink said, first of all, we don't want to tie ourselves in knots by super-specific rules. And, and so we want to find that middle balance between being specific enough to offer us guidance without tying ourselves in knots. And then also, we can revisit these. If, if it's feeling like this is not enough, we can always come back and change it. But I would say that although not on every specific, I'm, I'm leaning more toward, to the bulk of Option B.
I think, actually, Clerk Flintoff hasn't spoken yet, other than to introduce the item. Then Trustee Noem.
So a, a couple of things. I, I would say public comment is not what has made our meetings excessively long. I know it's hard to hear criticism. I know three minutes of criticism feels longer than three minutes of praise, but objectively, it has not been what's made our meetings long. Secondly, I think public comment and public participation is one of the most important parts of our meetings. And third, I want to say, for the action items, I think it's critical that we have the public input at that time. I agree, having better materials out in advance will help with some review. People learn differently, though. We can't expect all of our public to have studied the packet and emailed us instead. I mean, that's, that's one way of engaging. Some people really like to engage in real time, either here at meeting hall or remotely. No matter how far in advance we get our meeting packet out, there have been several examples from multiple members, and this is just, this is just the way that meetings work. Everything isn't going to be captured in the meeting packet. The crux of the issue may not be captured in the meeting packet. And, and I share again the discussion on the June twenty-second resolution as an example, where the resolution itself says nothing, said nothing initially about public, remote public participation. It didn't say yes, it didn't say no. But because it was a resolution, instead of the motion, and because of these issues, that would be the effect of it, and in fact, the primary objective of it. So if it wasn't until four PM that day that it dawned on the clerk that that's what was going on, then I really don't think, and the public's much smarter than I am, most of you, but I really don't think we can expect the public to look at a document, understand how the resolution's going to override the motion, see that the background in the memo says nothing about it. So it's not until that deliberation with the board where the real issues come out. And so I believe the public needs to have both the materials, and they have the right to hear our deliberation, hear our questions, hear our debate, and then weigh in on whatever question it is we're calling. Because even if they can have the action item, even if they can have the materials, even if they can have the model motion we think we might make, in that moment, we can make any motion we want, and it could be wildly different than what's in the model motion. So I just want to underscore the importance of having public comment on each motion of significance.
Trustee Noem.
Yes, I agree with what Jessica just said. And I also wanted to call your attention to the Pittsfield Township Rule, six point four, that Jane referred to. This rule allows for public comment for a maximum of five minutes during both public comment options. So public comment one and public comment two. So I think we, if we are going to go back and alter this, we need to extend the time limits for public comment back to five minutes.
Do you disagree with the Clerk's earlier statement that three minutes is adequate for someone to make a public comment?
Yeah, she thought, in her opinion, most people get their public comments out in three minutes, and that may be, but not everyone does. And there have been times when people have wanted longer than three minutes. So in fact, when I was doing the timekeeping for public comment, I was getting frequent comments from board members that I wasn't cutting people off enough at three minutes. And many people wanted to go on beyond three minutes.
Other comments from other members of the board? Okay, well, let's move on then to page 12. This is the first of Rule 8 XX options. This is entitled Internet Presence and Hybrid Participation. And so there's two options here. One would be to basically tie the remote participation directly to the emergency order of either the state or the county, allowing for remote participation of members of the voting body. And when we were debating that resolution back in June, this was a major point that that debate revolved around. And that was the fairness, or I guess the inequity of allowing participation by members of the board, but not allowing remote participation by members of the public. So this would, this rule would make it clear that when there is in place an emergency order that allowed remote participation by members of the Board of Trustees, and in those instances, that we would strive to make remote participation available to members of the public. But in the absence of such an order, that the township may seek to make its proceedings available for remote viewing, but that remote participation would not be available, except in those instances where there was a reason for making an exception to that rule.
Thank you. I'd promote option B, no change, to leave our board resolution of June 22nd in place. I would say option A is also written in such a way, I don't know if we'd be able to... I mean, again, just some context here, just so we don't have a messy legislative record when we look back and say, what does that mean? The way that option A is written, I don't think works, even for those of you who want to go in that direction. And after December 31st, likely the OMA is going to change, so it's all pending. The June 22nd resolution anticipated and accounts for all of that, so that we would continue to offer remote participation to members of the public and operate in accordance with the current state and county laws and orders for all of the reasons set forth. I would say, there's been a lot of pointing to this Washtenaw County resolution. And I don't know if it's because four members of the board are new and that was the big one that came out, or what. But I want to be very clear about what that is. That, it was a county declaration of emergency to keep members of the public bodies safe, to allow them to meet remotely. And as a result, to keep the public safe. Now, the public has never been barred by the OMA. The OMA is silent on what level of investment and innovation we use to engage with our public. In our June 22nd conversation, I had a lot of unanswered questions from our attorney. Some of them, I was throwing at him somewhat hastily, but especially around compliance with the ADA. And what is our duty to accommodate people? And so certainly, it's about parity. We shouldn't be, you know, joining from home and making people come here to meeting hall to speak in the middle of a pandemic, or in winter, or in any other time. But I also think it's our public duty to keep people safe and create as much accessibility as we can. So I just, I think it's regressive. I don't think it's the community we want to be. And certainly, you know, in March, in February, in June, we were ahead of the curve. But pick up your latest MTA Township Focus Magazine. The major article is all about this, and they're actually promoting this. We are actually ahead of the curve, and what we're doing is something I would hope all of my colleagues would be proud of in trying to be more progressive. I tire of hearing the references of how SIO used to do things. I tire of hearing, you know, holding up Pittsfield Township as our aspiration. And I would ask everybody to please try to be more innovative and welcoming. I appreciate everybody who attends. I too would love to see more people in person, but we happen to be living through a pandemic. And so we're going to connect with people however we can and with the technology that exists today. So I think that this is where everyone's going. And I think any step in the other direction would be a step backwards.
Other members? Trustee Jerome?
Well, I would just second the importance of the ability for the public to be able to view our proceedings. I think that there might be, I think that, you know, when you speak about accessibility, I agree. We should have closed captioning. We should have, you know, as I say in the last meeting, I was in favor of the live stream and Granicus component. I was not in favor of it at that time because I want to make sure that we're maximizing its potential prior to going that way. But I have no problem with the public being able to view our proceedings. I want them to be able to see it. I want them to be able to, you know, watch us and watch the deliberation. So I don't think, at least from my perspective, that there would be any... You know, I appreciate it, and I think there is efficiencies to being in person. I actually agree with trustee Corto. It's easier for a dialogue. I can look at you versus looking at the screens, no vents, you know, to... It's just easier for me to have a conversation with somebody at gym, sitting in the seat. So I think there's efficiencies and it's better in that respect. But that doesn't mean that the individual that cannot come to the Township Hall should be precluded from being able to observe the workings of the township that they reside in. So I would agree with that. And I just think that we need to work through what that is and how we're writing it. It could be a video, it could be a recording, you know, all those different things, I think, need to be available to them, so there's an opportunity to, one, view, and two, to review. So I would just make those comments.
Trustee Noel.
I would support option B. I think that residents want more of an option in terms of participation. They don't want to just sit home and view the meetings. I think most want to have the option to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting. I also want to mention that the hybrid equipment that we now have in our meeting hall was purchased with tax dollars. And residents have a right to being served with the equipment that we have. And I think we have a responsibility to provide the most that we can provide for residents, which would include full use of the equipment that we have purchased and giving residents the option of remote participation, if that is what they want. We are in a pandemic. I agree, it would be better to be able to interact face-to-face at the meeting hall. But the reality is, we're in a pandemic, guys. And the Delta variant numbers are continuing to go up in Washtenaw County. So we can all talk about how much it would be nice to talk more face-to-face in our meetings. And I hope that day does come soon. But for this time, we're not there. So I'm, I think we need to do everything that we can do to give our residents a full experience of remote participation, which to me includes the option to participate and speak in public comment. Thank you.
I'm just going to see if someone else who hasn't already spoken would like to speak. Trustee Vogel, or trustee Corto, or treasurer Palmer?
Well, I want to say one thing. At this moment, I'm kind of confused. We're talking about no changes proceeding as we have started to do. And it's almost like, I don't know, kind of a change in the conversation and the comments, like, somebody wants to stop it. And that's kind of the take. We know, we want to continue on. It's been a good thing.
So you support having people participate remotely?
What we've been doing, option B, yeah. So that's option B, Donna, and the option A would be a change away from that.
Yes, but I'm, like I said, I was, the conversation has been... I'm trying to figure it out. We all seem to want option B, and it's been a good thing.
I think the difference is tying remote participation, the ability to comment from home, I guess, to an emergency order where the members of the body, the members of the Board of Trustees, have the ability to participate remotely. Under the likelihood of that emergency order eventually going away...
Meaning you have to be here.
Meaning we would have to be here. The members of the Board of Trustees would have to be here.
That's part of the job.
Kathy and Jackie and Jane would either be here in person, or it would just be the four of us who would be the board for that meeting.
You know, there are always going to be extenuating circumstances. For instance, Jackie has a family situation she's been dealing with, but she's been able to attend the meetings. We've had instances in the past, similar. It's a good thing.
But under the law, she would not be able to vote. She would be able to, like a member of the public, she would be able to attend remotely, you know, and view the meeting. And she would be able to comment, I suppose, but she wouldn't... She wouldn't be able to vote, and she wouldn't be able to count towards quorum or anything like that. So in a sense, she wouldn't be able to participate as a trustee remotely unless there was an exception from an emergency order.
Okay. Well, if I could clarify. I mean, right now, under the OMA, regardless of the county emergency order, all seven of us can participate remotely for a medical reason or military duty. Medical reason, no proof, hey, COVID pandemic, scary, that's a medical reason. So it's effectively for any reason. All the county emergency order did was said that the seven of us could participate remotely for any reason. Now, I mean, just a pro tip for all of you who are in favor of option A. What you have written here is just not even going to work. So you might want to do some research on what the legislature's going to do and rewrite this and spend some time on it if you really feel strongly about it. Just to save us all some time, the way you have option A written is not going to affect the change you think it's going to affect. On December 31st, the OMA provision expires. Do we think we'll be out of the pandemic by December 31st? No. Have they amended the OMA, not once, but twice since the pandemic began? Yes. Will they be amending the OMA again? Most likely. So I would suggest all of you who, you know, may want option A, to do some more research and write some better language. But I don't think you're going to get there because I really think that the state is going to keep moving in the direction of more remote participation, at least for members. And I will say this, I think it is really not cool for us as public members to say we should be afforded the protection to join remotely and the public shouldn't be. I also think, even if on January 1st, we do have to show up here in person, then that's our job. I mean, look at, you know, everybody who stepped up and ran the elections during the pandemic. It's our job to do something slightly harder, slightly riskier than we're asking residents to do. So I think it is perfectly appropriate for the seven of us, if on January 1st, we have to be here in person, for the seven of us to be here in person and to continue to provide the service to our residents. It's offering more and doing better, and I agree with Donna that we should not restrict that.
Okay, just to clarify, no one is saying that we should be treated somehow differently, given some kind of special protection. That's actually the opposite of what this was intended to say. So if it doesn't say that, then yeah, it definitely does need some work. I think it does say that. But I think we've covered this, unless there's someone who hasn't spoken who would like to comment. Trustee Vogel.
Yeah, I think we need to take the long view here. We are, at some point, going to be out of this pandemic. And I think a hybrid world is part of our future. There are efficiencies to it in the corporate world for many organizations. Here's the tension I think we have to acknowledge. I think I hear most of us saying that there is inherent value in coming together as a community at Township Hall for a board meeting. To begin to know each other by name, to begin to build a relationship, build some trust, build understanding of who we are in relationship with each other. That is not possible in a hybrid format. So the tension that I'm aware of is, how do we come together as a community at Township Hall, have the opportunity for that relationship building, et cetera, but also honor sort of the technology we have and enable not just attendance and viewing of a meeting, but public comments remotely? It's like, I am drawn in that direction, to be able to hear from our residents remotely. But what I balance that with is, we have a lot of regulars at this meeting. The same 10 or 12 or 15 or 20 people that show up every week, I don't know any of them, you know? At what point do we develop a relationship and get to know each other? And not just the name, and I'll be candid, a name you can take pot shot at, a name you can be very supportive of, but it's a name. Where do we build relationships? We are local. This is the most local version of government you get to, right? And if we can't build relationships and come to know each other here, yikes. So I think we've got a real healthy tension here to sort our way through. Because when I take the long view, my hope is we are together in Township Hall. Once a month, twice a month, we have a meet and greet. It's a time for us to come together as a community. I find myself biased in that direction in knowing that there's also technology there to take advantage of.
Trustee Corto, do you want to add a comment?
Yeah, I'll just say briefly that echoing trustee Vogel, you know, I do think it's a hybrid world in the future. I do think we've made an investment in the technology and we should use it. I will just say, and again, maybe this is just a personal perspective, but using this technology does also place burdens on us. Some of us are wired differently. Maybe some of us do struggle more to attend to a technologically mediated conversation than a personal interaction. And as we move more and more to more technology, in keeping with the point I made about trying to learn the live streaming technology and before that, the same objections that I raised or questions, not objections, but questions, so that we can move deliberately and planfully as we try to integrate more technology, how can we, can we take the time to support people in using it and recognizing... that it does place a burden, and different burdens on different of us? And so that's just my biggest concern. We have the technology. It's here. We're gonna be hybrid. How do we all function at our most effective in this technological environment? And I hope we can offer and engage more support around that, about supporting the people who are the faces on the screens, and not just getting more and more screens.
Right?
Well, we've now had a full round. Why don't we move on to the next item, which is also labeled 8XX. This is on page 13. This is remote participation management. And the difference here is, this would, an option A, it would clarify that when remote participation is permitted, a third-party administrator or other administrator appointed by the moderator will be responsible for administering the remote interactions, subject to directions from the moderator. And the goal of this, I'll just add, is to sort of separate that aspect of administering the technology from a member of the Board of Trustees. To allow the member of the Board of Trustees to interact with the rest of the board without that additional responsibility, but also to remove any sort of unconscious bias from the administration of the remote interaction.
So I'm in favor of option B, no change. And I assume the comment about unconscious bias may have been directed toward me. Let me say this. Remote participation management, third-party administrator, this all, one, sounds very expensive and wasteful. And so I don't know if you mean paying somebody, you know, $500 a meeting. I'm not quite sure what that is. So that's my first objection, is the perceived cost of that. Second of all, you know, calling on the public is part of moderating the meeting, right? Let's back up to pre-pandemic. This is the moderator's responsibility. And so if Will wants to, you know, request assistance from, continue to request assistance from me, from another board member, from a staff person, anybody else who wants to sit here and do that, I welcome anybody else to step up and do it. I don't think it's a good use of township resources to pay somebody who has experienced, to use a personal computer to mute and unmute people on Zoom. This is, this is not rocket science. And so that's one. It just seems wasteful, and I would ask my colleagues to step up. I would also suggest that if people, you know, we often have staff here. Maybe if the administrator's gonna be at every meeting, that would be somebody, hopefully, who also knows how to use Zoom. The second thing about the unconscious bias, and I know Jane has mentioned this before too, I, I, I don't want to get in an argument, but I will say, I, by and large, I think do a pretty good job, from all accounts, of being extremely even with every member of the public. The one time, I didn't say thank you to one person, Jane was on it, and she called me out. And I think that was the one time. So in terms of bias towards the public, I object to that. That's quite offensive, unless there are examples. So again, objective minute-taking, objective record, unconscious bias, all of this is just gaslighting. And so I would say, in terms of, you know, this continues to be part of Will's job, and he can continue to ask for my help or anybody else's help. It is not the clerk's job. Jack and I just split it up, because, as you all have probably learned, trying to moderate a meeting and administer people, bringing them in and out of a meeting, is too much for one person to do. It was too much for Jack to do. So Jack and I split it up. So if you all want to keep making a federal case about the way in which I have done my very best to serve the township, you can do that. This continues. Will, at any point, can say, Alan, why don't you sit over here and do that? Donna, why don't you do it?
I did once.
I'm gonna do it.
In your absence, because I didn't much throw it in, I floated it.
So anyways, and I will say, you know, I'm very comfortable doing it. I've got it down. I don't feel distracted. But yeah, I just think it's, you know, is it about the idea that there's a third party, I mean, it is wasteful. It's like, we might as well be getting ourselves ladiesmaids and footmen, as far as I'm concerned. It's just, I just can't imagine spending $500 plus a meeting. I mean, planning commission was $500 plus a meeting to pay Carlisle Wardman to administer Zoom. Imagine how much money ours would be. So again, if there's a staff person who's gonna be here anyways, who can do it, great. Another board member, great. That's all.
Other comments? Other members of the Board of Trustees? I mean, trustee Jerome?
I mean, I think it would be a great option to take a look at engaging, perhaps, perhaps a new hire and/or one of the board members to potentially do a rotation of it, maybe?
Sure.
Or something of that nature. I will say that, as I said, I did do it in your absence. We had some severe technology issues. The actual admin was not that big a deal. If you remember, we could get actually in with, we were in the wrong Zoom, I guess, or some other, there was some administrator issue with that. But I do think that it could be better served, perhaps, in a different configuration. That's all.
Other comments? Trustee Cortow?
I guess one of my thoughts is that it does seem like a very big burden for the clerk to actually have to take and keep accurate minutes and also be switching back and forth to the moderation role. So I think finding ways to engage staff, to engage board members, and to look at remote, third-party administrators, any or all, just to explore some additional options to take some of that burden off the clerk.
Trustee Noel. You're muted.
I don't hear clerk complaining that this has been too much for her. In fact, what I'm hearing from her is that she's glad to do it. So I'm puzzled. I, you know, at our last meeting, we spent a lot of time discussing how we needed to reevaluate the spending that was on our agenda, the proposal for the Granicus issue. And so here, I'm hearing some of you talk about paying someone to do some of this work at meetings. And it, it doesn't make sense to me. So if Jessica is willing, and she's doing an excellent job, she is technologically adept. I am not. I took the training. I came in. I don't know how many of you actually took the training that was offered for, by this company that set up our hybrid system, but they had extensive training for anyone who wanted to take it. It, for me, was complicated. But it worked for Jessica. And if she's satisfied doing this, I think that we should continue to allow her to do it. She's serving a function for the township. She's done a good job.
Other comments? Trustee Vogel?
I do support the idea of some kind of rotation. In this phrase, unconscious bias, it, it, there's this potential to hear that as an accusation. It's not an accusation. It's sort of, we all got it. It's who we are. It's embedded in, in each of us. We have frames on the world that, that bring an unconscious bias. It's what we're shining a light on in this country right now with so many racial issues, and that's all a good thing. We all have an unconscious bias. We do. It's part of walking and talking. I think it is healthy if we can find a rotation of folks to manage the Zoom interface. It's not a burden on anyone individual. Maybe this new township administrator's part of that rotation, board members who feel comfortable in that role. I do think it is a good direction to think about.
All right, you want to comment too?
I don't think I should.
Okay. You don't have to. There's no requirement. All right, item, or rule 9, this is the Record of Meetings. 9.1 deals with the clerk's responsibility for maintaining an official record in minutes. Are there comments?
It's all good. It looks like what she does.
Okay. Item 9.2 is, this deals specifically with the record of comments from members of the public and attempts to sort of provide some direction in terms of the extent to which a comment, a public comment, will be recorded. Option A, it's pretty simple. It says, a record, only the general subject of the comments made by members of the public. And option B would not include a rule on this topic at all.
Yeah, I put forth option B, to defer to the statute. I think after the move that the board made on July 13th regarding the June 22nd meeting minutes, which we corrected, I am opposed to the board placing a restriction on what level of detail is in public comment. I think particularly when we have the somewhat, somewhat related, content-wise, to 9.3, 9.3 with the videos. I mean, I was just talking with Jan Culbertson, Chair of the Planning Commission, about this this morning. And, you know, really, there's a question at the state that I think is gonna be resolved in the next couple of years of what's the official record, what are the official records, the minutes? Can it include video? What happens when you have official minutes that have a link to a video or this or that? And then it goes into the retention and the technology needed so that we don't wind up with a whole bunch of VHS tapes? And so I'd say, you know, to include a rule on this topic, it's really about, I think as a board, we're so far away from coming to consensus, or am I even feeling open to, to the constraint from colleagues on this board about how much public comment I'll record in the minutes? Now, I want to remind everybody, I prepared the draft minutes. Okay? This board approves the minutes. So if I provide draft minutes to you that provide too much detail at every single meeting, at the top of the meeting, you have the right to, in public, say, let's strike this down and change it to this rolled-up subject matter. And so I would leave it in that, at that. I'm just deeply concerned about where this is coming from and the reasons for this, and I fear that it's coming from, I think, a couple places. One, the uncomfortable nature of a lot of negative public comment. And two, and I've heard Alan describe this, you know, a concern about an uneven public record, that there be public comment described, but maybe not a lot of board conversation, or vice versa. So I can change it up and play around with different levels of detail and evenness, but I am opposed to constraining, and even the way it's written, maintain a written record. That doesn't even make sense. The way you'd want to write it, if you wanted to do that, is say, the clerk shall, you know, record only the general subjects of the comments made by members of the public in the draft minutes for presentation to the board. That's the way you'd want to say that, if you wanted to do that. But I'm with option B. I just think, you know, after what happened, we need to leave this alone, rebuild trust, and move forward.
Treasurer Palmer?
I don't know where the thought is coming from. Other than, in the past, and more than once, this topic had come up. How much do you write verbatim when a person of the public's, you know, makes a comment? And finally, they said, call him today. Get, you know, they're legal. They have an attorney available to us. And that's all they do, is deal with, you know, township and what we have to do. And it has always been advised, and I don't agree with this, but it has been set. You, for instance, motions. You write the motion. You write the vote. Public comment, they said, do nothing more than motion and vote. I disagree with that, because down the road, when a question is raised, why did the board vote that way? Well, the conversation, the comments, will help you, you know, understand the why. But I don't know where this is coming from. I really don't, because we write the comment. We've chosen to do that. So let's do it. Let's continue. Some of this stuff is being, I don't know, I think we're reading things into things that aren't really happening. That's all I'm gonna say.
Trustee Noel.
You're muted?
You're muted.
Oh, I keep doing this. Donna, I take your comments to indicate that you would support option B. Is that correct?
Well, at this point in time, that's what we should be going by.
I agree. Okay, I agree. I think that historically, this is what most of the clerks in CIO have done in the past. When I was clerk, this is what I did. I tried to include a brief comment for each speaker in public comment that captured the essence of what the individual said. All public comment is going to be inherently subjective. We've talked about this before. So there will be a degree of subjectivity to all of this, but that's okay. This is done in This is done in many, probably most other townships. In many other townships, the clerk includes the essence of board member comments in the minutes. We don't do that. We historically have not done that here in Syo. But many townships do that. So I think what Jessica has attempted to do is fine, it's consistent, it's within her purview. She has made every effort to capture the essence of what residents are saying. So I definitely support option B. Option A doesn't make any sense.
And you know what, they sound alike.
No, they don't.
Yeah, no, what's written here is, it's saying the same thing.
I'd like to hear from folks we haven't heard from yet. Trustee Vogel.
I think, I think a word that's being used is very helpful, and the word is balance. Really helpful to hear what Kathy Noel, Trustee Noel said. What Trustee Noel said about, it hasn't been the practice in Syo Township, it sounds like over time, to capture board member comment or discussion. And it's helpful to hear that because that, for me, has been a source of unbalance. In my mind, what I would propose is we have to balance three things in the minutes. One is, and again, Trustee Noel is exactly right. Trying to capture public comment will be inherently subjective. That's just the nature of it. And so it's been painful to watch efforts by various board members to notice that subjectivity and make suggestions on how to ease the subjectivity to have a more objective summary. And that just got completely misconstrued and somehow bundled up into, we don't want public comment. And that's simply not what was being expressed. We have to, yes, the clerk does a draft. We have to work together to ensure that the short summary of public comment is in fact, an objective summary we all heard. When I see in the minute, two, maybe three lines of a public comment, and that's pretty consistent, but then I see one that's a few paragraphs, it sort of catches my attention. What was special about that particular comment? So we need to continue to work together on the objectivity, the accuracy of the summary of public comment, that's one. I'll go to the easy one next. The minutes, of course, have to have the motions and the votes and the outcome. That is the bread and butter of our work together. So that's just as it has always been, and the clerk does an excellent job on that. The third one, I think, is a very important discussion for this board. And to me, the August seventeen minutes are just the prime example of it. That was a very weighty, needing, significant input. I had written pages of comments that I felt I really had to write down and read from comments to express all the things that I was thinking. None of that is in the public comment. Very important discussions among board members, none of it, not public comment in the minutes. None of it is in the minutes. So if Joe Blow from Outer Space shows up and reads the minutes from the August seventeenth meeting, he would know a lot about our public perspective, perspective of our residents. Would know not too much about the thinking of individual board members. Again, I went to Pittsfield, and I'm not holding that up as the model, it's just that, it's a reference point, that's all. And there's seven point two says, clerk is responsible for maintaining a written record or summary of the discussion or comments of board members, of the board members. And then the names address comments made by members of the public. It's both. I think we have to find a way to do both. Who knows, eleven fifteen again.
Sorry, I thought you were finished, Jane.
I am, I am, I'm just so aware that it's eleven fifteen and we're going to go to one o'clock. And how can we continue to do this?
Well, we're actually pretty close to the end.
So, did you want me to speak?
Well, I wondered if you had a comment to make.
Well, I agree with Trustee Vogel that I would like more of the board discussion, the key considerations. And again, not in a long, huge discussion, just brief points. Because when I go back to minutes, and I found this especially in, depending on how detailed the minutes are from Planning Commission decisions, if I'm trying to review what the Planning Commission has done, you know, sometimes it can be hard to reconstruct the major points that were considered. But I would like to offer that there's also maybe a middle way and another way of capturing the important public comment, given that we all might have different ways of hearing it. And that is that as long as we are continuing to use Zoom, there is a live transcription option that can be easily enabled. And that transcription isn't perfect, it doesn't hear everything or have its voice recognition set to transcribe everything perfectly. But it would allow a written record that could be then posted on the website alongside the video for people who may not have the bandwidth to watch those videos easily, for people who might not take in video information as readily as they prefer to scan text. And I think that would be a way that if we always knew that complete written record would be there, that the minutes themselves could be a little bit more focused and honed so that we would have the balance and we would meet both needs. That would be my suggestion.
Put Clint out.
I think that's a great idea, Jackie. I looked into that already, and what I, I don't want to start doing it with Zoom, it's just too cumbersome right now. I could talk about some ways with it. The Granicus module offers that, and it appears to be a much better transcription and connecting it to the materials and whatnot. So I would, you know, definitely be open to that as a supplemental, whatever service we use, transcription as a supplemental to the minutes, just as the videos supplemental, the packets are supplemental. So I think, I think that's good. I will say again, the summarizing board discussion, you know, I'm open to doing more of that. I will say, you know, the, I provided one set of meeting minutes in excruciating detail just to see, you know, if y'all liked that better. And I didn't hear any comments, except they did have a misspelling. In terms of the objectivity and things like that, and I will say to Jane and Alec in particular, and Alec and Jackie do a really good job of giving me specific examples of changes to the draft minutes, but I really mean it, like, please. Like Jane, if you are referencing a meeting where there's two sentences of a public comment and then there's a paragraph, let me know where that is. I mean, but I really struggle with the criticism of the draft minutes when time and time and time again, there's no specific amendments made, with the exception of Jackie and Alec and some others who have given me ones, and I appreciate them. But when you talk about subjectivity and, you know, and inaccuracy, it is without proposed amendments, without proposed corrections. It's just pretty weak. So I agree, you know, balance, and I'm open to the idea of looking at the transcription and some ways to improve.
Are there other comments on nine point two? Rule nine point three.
Well, let me just make one more quick observation about nine point two. And that is, some of the burden ought to be on us as board members. So for example, I went back and listened, and this is not tonight's conversation. But if a board member, relative to a particular agenda item, has really prepared comments, prepared a perspective, it's written out, it ought to be offered for input to the minute, to the minute. Because it represents a substantive, is that right? Doesn't sound right, substantive part of the discussion. So I just want to keep that option on the table also. I also have to let the cat out.
We did look at some models of that, Jane, of including the written comment by request, remember that, well? So I think that's something we can, we can look at. I would just caution folks, a lot of times what people have written down what they're going to say is not what they said. And so I don't think it would be appropriate to include it if it is not exactly what you said.
I do understand that, because I listened, I went back and listened to much of August seventeenth because I was uncomfortable with whatever. And you're exactly right, I would have to amend what I said to match the video, yes, right. Amend what I wrote to match what was in the video.
Okay, moving on to rule nine point three, and I just want to say, we have, with nine point three and nine point four, those are the last two rules where there are sort of options A and B. Everything else is, there are no sort of disagreements in the draft. You know, there may be questions or disagreements or additions or whatever, but there are no sort of disagreements built into the draft for us to consider. So these are the last two items where there's two options. Rule nine point three is video or audiotape record. And option A states simply that the clerk is responsible for recording and maintaining an audio or videotape recording of each entire meeting of the board.
And option B is, do not include a rule on this topic, defer to the statute, and to direct the clerk to bring a viable proposal to the board once relevant pending changes in statute are made. So there's a few issues here. One, technology and the ridiculous administrative burden that currently exists to imperfectly post in that weird viewer that doesn't really work on our website, our videos. So we need a technology fix. Two, our outgoing IT director also advised we would need to set some sort of, you know, if this becomes a record, right, a published record. And this was my concern when the supervisor brought this up on May twenty-four, suddenly. When it is a published public record and it's silent on the retention, is it a permanent record? And that was Jim's concern, and he suggests that we would have some backup. So what is our backup of the backup? So right now, you know, Michigan statute guides all of the record's retention. In the clerk's retention schedule, which the supervisor studied, it shows that audio and video recordings may be deleted after six months. And we are keeping the videos as long as we can. You know, since April twenty twenty, we have all of them and will continue to. But at some point, we're going to have a storage management issue, we're going to have some other issues. So I do think retention's important. Jan Culbertson's starting to think about this for the Planning Commission. And I think that's probably an even, you know, slightly different question. So statute, the third point is, what do you want this record to be considered? What is this video record? Is it part of the minutes, is it part of the official record? And so I would just ask those promoting option A to just think about what you're trying to achieve here. And last, I can't be responsible for recording. I mean, I, I think that's silly, the board, you know, we record because I press record. I've been in meetings before where somebody else is the co-host and accidentally presses stop recording, and I notice and I start re-recording. And I don't want this kind of extraordinary additional burden. It looks like a simple thing, right? But when you put this responsibility on me, the clerk, recording and maintaining this record we've never had before, supposedly forever, you know, a permanent record, it just makes, it's unnecessary. And it doesn't address any of the problems or needs that I have shared with you about how we can streamline some of the technology, create some of the backups. And I do know that the legislature is looking at how to consider video recordings differently. Because, you know, surprise, surprise, we're not the only ones suddenly having all of our public meetings on video. So they're going to have to deal with this. So I would just ask that everybody chill and please direct me to bring a viable proposal to the board once the relevant pending changes to the statute are made and we have some technology assessment completed.
Trustee Vogel.
It feels like this one actually has an easy middle ground. And that is, option A for now, we need a video recording of these minutes, of these meetings. And we've got a rough and imperfect means of doing that, but we need to continue until we get direction from the state and technology solutions and the clerk can bring a proposal. It feels like this one's easy in terms of it's both and. It's option A in the interim, it's option B in the longer term.
And I would say the board shall.
So you're
You're doing it now, Jessica.
It's different, Jane, I'm doing it now and I'm going to continue to do it. But when it's created in the rules like this as a record, I just, I am concerned about, I am concerned about being directed by adopted rules of this board to do something that I'm not set up to do. I mean, yes, I'm doing it, I keep doing it. But I, I'm certainly not equipped, it's certainly not. Yeah, I don't know what to say. I mean, we're recording our meetings, if we rotate the seat, somebody else presses record. I mean, this isn't all my responsibility.
Mr. Feng.
I'll use this discussion to remind the board that these rules are intended initially to govern the operation of the board and for the benefit of the board. And I'll just remind you that if you adopt the rules, including the section, I think it's section fourteen, it's clear that none of this is intended to create a legal obligation to any third party or any legal duty this board to govern the operation of the board. Let me get back to that section.
I know that, Jim, I know that, Jim, it's thirteen point three. Yeah, I'm still uncomfortable with it. But I hear you. No, 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 I got you, it's good.
Other comments? Other comments? Well, then why don't we move on to rule nine point four? This is public access to meeting records. There here again, there are two options. Would you like to introduce option A?
Option A is statute. And I support option A, which will omit the last line will as an option B.
So the difference is the last line in option B, which says the clerk shall be responsible for posting the video or audio recordings on the township website, which in some ways is sort of directly linked to the prior rule. And maybe we've already covered that. And then rule nine point five. I mean, I don't want to cut anyone off if anyone wants to come in on on rule nine point four. Trustee Vogel.
I think there's another issue here that needs to be considered. And that is how long are board minutes and packets available on the website? For example, I went to look for some minutes from earlier last year and they had been on the website and then they weren't. So it prompted me to think we need we need an agreement. We need a rule of order about how long is is the record in the public. And I would like to propose maybe it's the current and previous year or something. There's got to be a means of accessing previous board minutes and packets.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I agree with you, Jane. Again, what you noticed was the change of the website. So we had the broken WordPress website with a lot of minutes from prior years up there. We still have all of those unpublished. I'd love to get them back up. It's just nobody has the time to do it. But but we have all of them from whenever we started having digital recordings of the minutes and certainly all of our hard copy minutes forever. In April twenty twenty, when we went to Zoom, we I and then I had all of those up associated. This is all related to that video module that I proposed because there's basically two different databases at play. So you saw the older one. And then when we switched to the new website, you then saw the newer one, which didn't have the old stuff. So it's just a tech technology problem. I I I agree with you. But I can't fix it right now.
So part of it is, if I understand what you just said, part of it is that nobody has time to do it and part of it is that the technology doesn't allow for it?
The technology, the technology doesn't allow for the association of prior videos with the prior minutes and the prior agendas and the prior meeting packets. I once, once the video module is implemented, they'll get those databases lined up. So everything from the last two years will all be up there nice and neat. And then what we would need time for is for people to go back, you know, from from years past and and put things up so that they're they're searchable in that way, Jane. You know, and I and I do think that there's kind of a cost benefit question then at that point when we're looking at things older than two years. It's probably not worth it. People can request it.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Other comments? Uh trustee Carteau.
Thank you. Yeah, I I had a similar comment because again, I understand this is bridging the old website with the new website. I I mean, I'm wondering and then following up on supervisor Hathaway's question, like, what is it? What is it that is needed to help address this? It's it's people, it's technology. I I'm trying to understand because I do think it is important for the public to be able to view the the what the previous board has done, you know, actions over more than the course of the year. And I wonder if there is, again, maybe some intermediate workaround for now where you don't have it all cross indexed with the video, but you just have, you know, like a compile of the minutes in one place and the videos are in a different place. But but just so that people who, again, might take in information in different ways. Some people like going to the videos. Some people may prefer the written minutes so that so that it's there for people to to use.
Yeah, I think the the video plugin is is the the quickest way for April twenty twenty forward. And I wouldn't, I don't think a workaround would be worth the time. And then, I mean, again, I I think it's just, you know, it's technology and it's people. And again, I'm not a tech person. I'm forty four years old, just your average forty four year old. So hopefully, you know, the administrator has the technology chops that we've advertised for. And like I said, that's just a skill set we need to keep developing and more staff Jackie so that people are comfortable batch uploading a bunch of things and getting them all indexed and organized.
Are there further comments on nine point four? And now rule nine point five, I think.
Set as statute.
Yeah, that's a statutory thing.
We've we've always done it. Our newspaper of record is Wasna Legal News and also the Sun Times. And we do that.
So that's for mood. Well, rather than plunging into the rest of these items, I would suggest, especially since none of them were identified as being points of difference of opinion, at least obviously, that we sort of put a pause at this point after it's sort of at at rule ten closing sessions and move to public comments so that we're not keeping people up past midnight.
Will, could could I ask that we determine when we're next gonna take these up? Before we move to public comment?
Well, that's a little tricky. I mean, do you mean we're going when we're going to take up, starting at rule ten forward? Or do you mean bring them back, the sort of revised portions of?
Any next step on these? I just don't want these to keep languishing.
Uh trustee Jerome.
Is there is there a reason to bring up the ten? I mean, I I guess I would offer, I would hate to bring these back again for ten forward if there's not anything that's been identified for the board trustees, areas of concern. If there are, then obviously we would need to. Obviously, I think that during your review, you obviously you're revisions in your review with Mr. Fink that if there's any inconsistencies with statutes and or supervisor roles and all the other things that mentioned before, that would be incorporated into that review at that time.
Right.
But unless there's other substantive changes that people have issue with, because I think we've all reviewed it, I would suggest we could treat it as as part of the conversation and not necessarily dive down into each respective.
I was just trying to clarify what what was intended.
Just my suggestion.
Trustee Vogel.
I want to support the clerk on this. I think we need a good next step here and I'm gonna propose one. We've we have worked through a lot tonight. We have provided good conversation and good input. And we need to be clear about what the process will now be to develop the next and hopefully close to final draft. We we now need all this input distilled into the next draft that gives us something to actually take a vote on and 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 come out to the board, get feedback. And then the next time it comes back to the board, we're ready to take a vote. So I assume it would be the same process as before. The clerk and the supervisor would come together, reach agreement on modifications based on tonight's discussion. Jim Fink would be in the loop to sort of bring another perspective, a balance point, legal clarity, et cetera. And then hopefully this comes back for a vote in October.
Well, I I hear what you're saying and I I agree with much of what you suggest. But we can't, the clerk and the supervisor can't sort of go away and come back with a resolution of the points of disagreement, the nine items. That's I mean, maybe there's some of them where, based on the conversation this evening, we could resolve those points of disagreement. But I think if you're sending us off to to go and come back with a document that doesn't contain points of disagreement.
No, no.
No, okay.
I think I think we crystallized the issues that need to be decided on.
Okay. All right. Clerk Flintoff.
Yeah, just to build upon what Jane was saying, I'm I'm comfortable with that that process and that that second line that comes back would be blacklined with comments, but so that it's clear where the changes are from this first draft to a second draft and understanding that there will still be some outstanding questions. I I will just flag for my colleagues, especially Alec and Jackie. Twelve point two, you're gonna have some opinions on. And Donna, I know you have an opinion on fourteen one. So we can save those conversations, but those are conversations for sure. I think we could do a second draft, blacklined with comments. I don't want to impose too much on our attorney. But, you know, we should be able to bring that back for the October twelfth meeting for for further discussion, the next step.
Possible.
Oh, well, we have, we're converting gas up at the cottage.
Oh, gotcha.
Those appointments have already been made.
Gotcha.
Hang on.
Well, I think, you know, one of the things that we did in order to arrive at this evening because we wanted to make sure this was a a meeting that everyone could attend is we did kind of a doodle poll, a modified doodle poll to find a date when all board members would be present. And maybe that's what we need to do. I know we have a reason to do that for a different meeting. So we could do another doodle poll and see what we find for October.
Donna, are you gonna be in town on the twelfth or the twenty sixth? The twenty sixth? Yeah, the next regular.
I think we.
Well, let's let's not do this right now, please. I mean, a calendar thing at eleven forty five at night when we still need to honor our public comment.
Yeah.
You can't do the calendar ID.
I'm concerned that we're we're doing something that we should be doing offline in the middle of a meeting.
Yeah, and and just just it's fine, but but one point here, again.
Immediate need for that.
Yeah, it's the immediate need. We have regular meeting dates that we need to use and 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 they are available to us to put, you know, use agenda time for important things. So that is the time when the public and all of us have set aside time. So what's our due date, Will?
Well.
I mean.
I don't think you I don't think you have to know that precisely. You know the request from the board. You guys can go off and figure it out.
I acknowledge the urgency of, you know, your desire to move forward on this. I hear you. I was ready to move forward on this in June. At that time, other people wanted to slow things down, so.
There was no document.
So let's let's just let's just not get into the gotcha game right now. It's late. We want to give people a chance to have public comment. So we will move now to public comments. And this is the time for members of the public to speak up for to speak for up to three minutes on matters under the purview of the board of trustees. Ideally, the comments will be directed towards the substance of the meeting tonight, the rules of order. If you are participating remotely, well, everyone will be, I ask you to raise your Zoom hand to be recognized. Trustee Jerome has agreed to serve as timekeeper and will announce when there's thirty seconds remaining and then time up. Out of fairness, please stop speaking when your three minutes are reached. And I think everyone has heard me give all of the other sort of guidelines. They're not really rules, they're guidelines. But please, basically, we'll just do what the treasurer suggested and please be respectful of of everyone and civil. Is there anyone who would like to comment?
I see two Zoom hands. First Pam Boyd, followed by Michelle Cody. Pam?
Hi, Pam Boyd, Scioto Township. I'm hard of hearing. So coming to in-person meetings is challenging. It's very hard to hear in that large room. A meet and greet would be great, actually. I would like that. Part Jess is part of the core of this township and her interaction with the public is well known. I vote to keep her as the person who interacts with public during this meeting, especially if you want to end at a decent time. Learning the equipment is time consuming and challenging. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Michelle Cody. Michelle?
Michelle Cody, Scioto Township as well. And I'm glad that the open meeting rules are being clarified. However, I must state that the public comment time should be restored to five minutes. Sometimes time is necessary to make a useful, informed or informative statement. And public service is just that, it's service. So thank you for your service tonight and the marathon meetings. It's been noted that at several prior meetings, however, board of trustees members have been disrespectful to the very public they purport to serve, noting that dismissively, oh, well, it's just some of the same public comment. While it happens to be some of us who feel public service is a two-way street, the democracy does thrive with discussion and debate. So I appreciate the informed time, the public commentary time. And an informed public is a participatory participatory forum. Growth is messy. I do say kudos to Clerk Flintoff for her knowledgeable information and corrections. It's vital to be careful with legalities. Board of trustees correspondence should be transparent, both the call and response, as it's jokingly referred to. All the major tech platforms like Facebook, et cetera, are being forced to be similarly compliant legally. And as the Washington Post will state, democracy dies in darkness, so transparency is paramount. I do think remote participation is essential in this day and age. And I appreciate individuals on the board speaking up to support the fact that you can't deny what's become a useful, usual and normal way to communicate remotely and via the internet. It's extremely helpful as we've as many discuss. And remote participation, I support option B. Again, why limit resident participation? Again, it's a democracy. Public comments are necessary. It'd be kind of nice if we did have some meet and greets, like a town hall sort of thing, to take the heartbeat of the community. And it's a little hard to wait through the long, long meeting to get to be able to speak. And there is a point, in fact, with the time that it took in the meeting and the time that people like myself are told, oop, can't talk anymore. I don't think that's quite right. I do thank trustee Noel for supporting open discussions per the Roberts rules. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michelle. Next up is Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Good job. Excellent.
Rob?
Jacqueline Carteau had her hand up.
Will? Rob noticed Jackie's hand.
Oh, I.
I just wondered if I could be recognized to briefly respond to that comment.
Why don't we wait till the end of public comments?
Okay, that's fine.
If you would like to respond to a point of fact that you can ask for to be recognized. Are the is there any other comment from the public?
Yes, Rob Pattinson had started. Rob?
Thank you.
Sure.
I would like to see uniformity among all the committees that meet at Scioto Township. A template that follows the BOT. A template that follows the BOT format for agendas and agenda packets would help. The past year and a half has advanced the way the township uses technology much, much faster than it otherwise would have without the need to respond to the pandemic. Since we now have the capability to record all committee meetings, I would suggest uniformity apply here as well, and all committees record their meetings. Recordings give us a much better and more detailed picture of what happens during the meetings than minutes do. I would also recommend the township treat recordings the same as minutes, so that they are protected and archived. Item 2.6 limits meeting time. If the Board of Trustees chooses to end meetings around 10:00 PM, you will have to go to weekly meetings. This Board of Trustees is trying to make a lot of progress this year, and limiting the amount of time spent in meetings means you will have to have meetings more often. Item 6.4 limits trustees to speak only twice on any subject of debate. I believe it is a mistake to limit discussion on any item or issue. In order to come to the best conclusion, the township needs to allow free-flowing and open discussion. Limiting discussion makes it look like the leadership just wants a rubber stamp and isn't interested in views that aren't aligned with their own. Tonight is the perfect example of how well discussion works when it works. I lost count of the number of good ideas and adaptations tonight that were incorporated into this document. This Rules of Order document is full of potential landmines, and you all have to be very careful how you choose to use it to work together and how you choose to be seen by the people you serve. A lot of this document addresses the amount of time spent discussing issues and the amount of time related to public comment. I would like to point out that time should be the least of your concerns. Addressing the issues important to the residents of the township and choosing to govern with honor, integrity, and transparency should be the highest priority. If it takes longer to do it right, that shouldn't be a surprise. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for slogging through this, and thank you for letting us participate and, and watch. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Roger Rail. Roger?
Hi, I've listened to most of the meeting, and I appreciate it having participation via Zoom, because I couldn't make a lot of the meetings in person with everything going on, so I hope you continue that even after COVID is under control. It's, it's part of our new way of doing things in the world. I work with a lot of startups. Yeah, and some of them work only remotely. Like, they, they have yet to meet some of their colleagues because they, they were forced into remote. But in fact, remote is part of the new way of doing things. You don't have to do it all the time, but it makes it so much better. There's more productivity. As far as getting some of the work done, we were talking about archiving earlier. We have a lot of resources in the township, township residents, who could help with that. You might need to assign somebody as a volunteer coordinator to help with the different, help have, volunteer helps with the different committee needs when you don't have the resources to hire staff. But archiving the minutes, for instance, and indexing those in a separate way from, they can be accessed from the website, is certainly a simple thing that we have the resources in the township to do, so. I'm glad to talk to somebody offline about that if, if that's a, if you want to continue that. So I guess that's about it. We'll have a card meeting, what is it, Kathy, a couple of weeks from now, right? And there'll be some updates, some really important things that have come to light that will be discussed. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Roger. I see no other hands. Will?
In that case.
Oh, sorry. iPhone. iPhone just raised their hand. iPhone?
Hey Jessica, thank you. It's Alice Owen. Sorry, I am, I am far away with really poor connectivity, so if I fade out, just somebody wave at me. I just was struck with whether or not there might be a middle ground on public comment. One that would sort of balance the desire of the board to have the work time and, you know, the efficiencies that, that I think folks are yearning for, but also balancing that with the public desire to be heard. So I'm gonna throw this out there. Anybody can, you know, pay attention or not, as you like, but I was gonna call it my option C. And just suggest, you know, what if we did something with basically no public comment at the beginning? Unless it was a true, you know, I'm thinking of like when Pam Boyd brought up the child abduction situation. You know, if we had a true matter of public safety or a, a critical, you know, Gelman deadline that was really something the board wanted to elevate and, and members of the public brought to you, you know, right at the gecko, like, let, let's hit that, you know, right from the beginning, so it establishes the, the importance of that. But then the board could immediately sort of get down to business, incorporating within each, you know, action item, the public comment that we've become used to with the three minutes from each member of the public that wanted to speak on a matter before the board. The, the thought I had with that was that that allows the public to comment within the flow of the meeting in a way that allows it to be most responsive to, you know, what the board members are, are, have, have had at their disposal, that they, you know, perhaps a member of the public has some additional information to contribute to that before you, for instance, have a vote or before, you know, if it's not an action item, if it's just a discussion item, before you decide what your next steps might be. And, and then frankly, I would say the public comment at the end would be on any topics that weren't covered, you know, either that beginning public safety situation or in the, in the public comments within the flow of the meeting on the actual thing. So, and for folks that might worry that last public comment would be late, you know, someone who was interested in the topic, not on the agenda, seems like that would be a natural thing they might be able to write in about, too. So I don't know, just seems like perhaps a middle ground that, you know, folks who I know are working hard on this already might take up. Thanks so much.
Great. Thank you, Alice. Next up is Jillian Carey, followed by Daryl Depesto. Jillian? Jillian?
Yes.
Hi.
I, I don't have my, my other microphones set. I apologize if I'm not coming through clearly. Okay, thank you. So there's a few, I just have a few notes. It'll be quick. I agree with the, somebody said the MTA model rules of engagement. I believe that should be included. And also, you know, sitting through these meetings and it, public comments keep coming up and reading through the rules of order, it just seems like it's just trying to, you know, squash public comments. You know, it's almost as if the public is the enemy. And it's really unnerving because, you know, you're, you were elected by the public to serve the public, but you don't want the public. And I keep hearing that, oh, we want to engage with the public, but then your actions are, are opposite. If you really wanted to get to know the public, then why not have a town hall meeting? Why not listen to residents? Why not have some engagement? For, for a long time, the residents have felt alienated. You take our tax money and you're happy with that, but you don't want to hear from us. So really, if you're serious about your words, put it to action and bridge the gap. Bring us together. Regarding the, the, the previous commenter and saying not to have, I think she said, not to have public comments in the beginning, I disagree with that because there's a lot of elderly residents or residents that have to get up in the morning that would really like to speak on whatever topic that's important to them. Why not let them speak? Public comments are not the things that are keeping this, these meetings long. A lot of it is disagreeing. It's just explaining things over and over again in the same thing in different words. It's bullying some of the, the board members. It's not listening. You know, unify, work together. It's not very hard. Middle ground, please. Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jillian. Next up is Daryl Depesto. Daryl?
Yep, great. Thanks so much. I'll be brief. Just two things. Lots of good discussion tonight. Two things stuck out in my mind. One is I love the idea of getting the packet information for the agenda earlier, often, very busy, work-life, family life. Being able to read that stuff, digest it, and then preferably write my comments to the board in a letter. But it's gonna take some time to articulate that and be thoughtful about it. When you get it the day before or the day of, it's, you know, it's really hard to do that. And then if you have limited time to have public comment, it's really hard. And so I'm more in favor of having that time to review things upfront. And on the back end, you know, I, I kind of liked the, the two speakers ago or resident, two, two, two comments ago, option C. You know, I don't know about limiting at the beginning, but certainly maintaining the ability to speak like after, you know, somebody comes and presents, and then understanding the contextualization of what they're presenting further and allowing the public to even bring in new ideas about ways to think about the decision, I think is invaluable. I, I appreciate sort of all the opportunities to talk, and thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Daryl. There are no more interested public.
In that case, is there a motion? I almost saw a motion from trustee Noel for, to adjourn. But trustee Corto, raise your hand first.
I just wanted to respond briefly to this idea of meet and greets.
Oh, yes.
And, and make the point again that the Parks, Rec and Advisory Board and LPC, the Land Preservation Commission, along with some members of the Board of Trustees, have been having this series of monthly Saturdays at Scioto Preserves hikes, which are both a chance to explore our wonderful natural lands that we've been preserving and also a chance to really have that meet and greet opportunity where we mix and mingle and talk to each other informally. So the, the first series of hikes, of three monthly hikes, has just concluded. We, we didn't have our plan and time to get it in the next quarterly newsletter, but our hope is to have it in following quarterly newsletters. But we are now starting to do a banner headline on the website a week to 10 days in advance of each of the planned hikes in general. The, the goal will be to do them first Saturdays. We didn't have the publicity and time to do it the first Saturday of October, so we will be doing the next one, the first Saturday of November, 10 o'clock. Usually they go to about 11:30, maybe linger a little later to 12. And again, those will be posted on the website. We'll have a plan for the next two to three months of where the places will be. So I would encourage any resident interested to, to come and talk with your, your member, your board members, your commission members, and, and explore our beautiful lands.
Along those lines, one other opportunity we're having for an in-person get-together is Sunday, October 24th, the Fire Station Halloween Party. Sure, it's geared towards kids, but everybody will be there. The new fire station will be open. There's lots of place, space outdoors to gather, so that's also an event I hope all the board members will be at and, because I know a lot of residents will be there, too.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Vogel? Support by Corto. Please call a roll.
Flintoff, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel? Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0, meaning adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Recording stopped.